...his leadership on this and two, to make it very clear that my position on this is that we, we do need to move forward with the opportunities for those who can find some comfort through the use of medical marijuana, to have the opportunity to do that here in Los Angeles. And also, I do agree that we, we have to expand the debate about decriminalization because I think we have far too many violent criminals who are excluded from the penal institutions who should be in there because we are sticking nonviolent, low-level drug offenders in serious penal institutions and making them further, furthering their criminal education as opposed to giving them rehab if that's what they need. And so I do agree with you that that's a debate that we should have. But in this case, we should focus on the medical marijuana issue and that, I think, and Mr. Zine has done an outstanding job with that.
Please prepare the roll on this item and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
That means that that was unanimous vote for the first reading. Next week, we will have a second reading. It will require just a simple majority of eight votes, but we do expect to, to have a full quorum then, and so that will go over one week.
And joining us now is District Three Councilmember Dennis Zine. Mr. Zine, thanks for coming back on Council Week in Review.
Pleasure to be with you.
Let's be clear right up front, this was not a vote about legalizing marijuana, was it?
Absolutely correct. It's not about legalizing marijuana. This is about compassion. This is about the use of medicinal marijuana for people who have cancer, who have illnesses that cause them great discomfort. And what medicinal marijuana does is remove that unsettling, the nausea. It brings a calmness about, and that's what this is about. It's about treating people who are sick, people who need prescription medication to survive, to reduce the nausea, medicinal marijuana, strictly for that. Not for recreational, not for people getting high, but strictly for people who need it because of a medical reason.
Of course, I guess it was back in the sixties and seventies, people used to joke about smoking marijuana gave you the munchies. That's actually an important component in this case, isn't it?
That's very true. And what it does for people who are on chemotherapy, cancer survivors, a lot of individuals take a lot of prescription medication, what it does is calm that stomach, calm that, so the nausea removes and you can consume food and you can live somewhat normal life while taking all the other medications and many of those medications keeping you alive. But there's that conflict between the prescription medications and the consequences which the medicinal marijuana removes those consequences for the patients.
Now, Prop 215, of course, was passed by a majority of the voters statewide in California. What exactly does Prop 215 allow and not allow?
Well, Prop 215 permits, and that was passed 11 years ago in the state of California, that permits us in the state of California to have medicinal marijuana for medical purposes. That's what that measure 11 years ago permits, and that's exactly what we're doing. Unfortunately, 11 years too late here in the city of Los Angeles to enact this ordinance.
In the city of Los Angeles, about how many medicinal marijuana dispensaries are there? And by the way, how do we know?
We know there are approximately 2 to 400 at this particular time. We started looking at this about two years ago. There were six in the city of Los Angeles. Now there are currently 2 to 400. And we checked the local papers. They advertise, they're not hidden, they're out in the public, they're not underground. So it's very easy to recognize the medicinal marijuana dispensaries throughout the city of Los Angeles.
I'm sure that most medical marijuana dispensaries are catering to seriously and terminally ill patients, but I'm sure it's a concern of some people. Are there others who are simply selling pot to anybody who comes in?
That's absolutely correct. We have one location in North Hollywood that was passing out flyers at local high schools to come in and get some marijuana. There are people who are running totally illegal under the guise of medicinal marijuana. Those are the people we need to go after with the DEA, with local law enforcement. But for medicinal purposes, we believe, and my council supports, along with the mayor and chief Bratton, that we want to control that in a manner that the patients, the people who need it to survive, can obtain that and put those individuals who are basically dealing illegal drugs out of business. Put them out of business and put them in jail where they belong. The drug dealers belong in jail. Medicinal marijuana, those particular facilities belong in those communities. Regulation, the hours of operation, security, et cetera, all have to be in place, and that's what this measure is all about that I've been pushing.
We saw a little bit of the floor discussion in council, but just to be clear, tell our Channel 35 viewers exactly what the new ordinance will do and what, if any, are the current regulations for medical marijuana dispensaries?
What the new ordinance will do, and currently there are no regulations, the new ordinance will require all operating establishments within the next 60 days, if you're a medicinal marijuana facility, within the next 60 days, you must comply with the following regulations. Obtain a tax registration certificate from the city of Los Angeles. Obtain a permit from the Board of Equalization. A lease for the premises that you're occupying. Insurance and dispensary membership. Also, LA County health permit if that's required. That's what current locations must do within the next 60 days. If they do not, they'll be put out of business. Additionally, no new facilities can open within the city of Los Angeles. So this ordinance stops any new operation and brings those in place under this minimum standard while for the next year, with the police department, with building and safety planning, and the marijuana, medicinal marijuana groups come up with ordinances, regulations, hours, where they can be established in the communities while we work through that through the next year.
I'm sure there's bound to be somebody who is watching you in council or is seeing this council week program here on Channel 35 and thinking, wait a minute, Dennis Zine, 38 years in law enforcement, how did he get behind this particular issue? For some people, this does seem a little counterimage for you.
Well, it does, and I've had that comment by many people. I believe in compassion. Police officers are compassionate individuals and they want to help people. Police officers become police officers, they want to help people. This is all about compassion. This is all about people who are cancer survivors. Everyone viewing knows someone who has or has had cancer, who's a survivor, who on chemotherapy, radiation, where they lose their hair, where their, their weight loss takes place. People know that. What this simply does is provide those people with some compassion, some medication to assist them while they're going through that tragic illness of cancer or AIDS or any other type of illness or disease that really destroys the body. That's what this is about. This is about compassion for our fellow human beings. And why Dennis Zine, as a member of the LAPD for so many years, as a current reserve officer, why am I carrying this forward? Because I've seen what happens with cancer patients. I've seen the devastation to the body. I also know on the other side of the coin, what happens when drug dealers destroy our communities. So I'm very fair with this to say, we want to be compassionate and help those people who need it, who are ill, who are sick. We need to help those people, and those that are dealing drugs, we're going to come after you with all the resources of law enforcement, which is what we need to do.
Obviously, you know all too well that while you and your colleagues were voting on this issue on Wednesday, the DEA was out there raiding and making arrests at medical marijuana dispensaries around the city. What's the future of those raids? Will they continue? Are federal agencies choosing to just ignore state law and the will of the city council?
I hope the federal authorities follow through with the letter that I sent asking that DEA stop the raids on medicinal marijuana facilities. The DEA has a lot of people they can go after, and all you have to do is look in local papers and you'll find all the medicinal marijuana facilities, they're advertising, so it's not a big search for the DEA to go after those. They're an easy target for the DEA. What we're saying is let the DEA go after the hard drug sellers, the hard drug users. Go after those people. Use your resources in the proper arena. Also, we're working with Congressman Roybacher on federal legislation to withdraw the funds from DEA that are being appropriated for the raids on the medicinal marijuana facilities.
Yeah, I'd like to get into that federal angle in just a moment, but do you believe that by temporarily prohibiting any more dispensaries from opening, that the DEA will stop or at least decrease the number of raids that it conducts? I mean, surely, they, like most government agencies, are overworked and understaffed.
We don't know what they're going to do. We hope they will permit us, local control, the second largest city in the country, where we know we have a lot of cancer survivors, we know we have a lot of people with AIDS, a lot of other debilitating illness and diseases, we hope they would let us control this on a local level. The federal government does not need to come in and step on local government. We believe in local control. If we were ignoring and not doing anything, then the federal government could intercede. But the voters of this state in 1996 supported 215 compassion use of marijuana, medicinal marijuana. We believe the federal government needs to bow out, let us run our shop, let us run what we need to run, compassionate in the city of Los Angeles, and let them go after the drug dealers. There's a lot of work for the DEA to do. We don't want to put them out of business, but let them go after those people who are destroying our communities, destroying our youth with those illegal drugs. Let them go after the people distributing cocaine and heroin and other types of, of drugs, illegal drugs. Let them go after those people and not go after the poor cancer survivor, the person with AIDS that's using medicinal marijuana to survive in our society.
You mentioned a moment ago, the Hinchey-Rorabacher amendment in Congress. Council, of course, voted unanimously to support that. If passed, how would that affect the DEA and the marijuana dispensaries?
That will help us because that'll tell the DEA, we're not going to provide any funding, you're not going to receive funding to go after the medicinal marijuana facilities. And that's what we asked Congress to do, to not hold those funds for that purpose, to withhold those funds, but to use funds for other purposes, other legitimate purposes. And it's all run about the dollar. If the city of Los Angeles decided we don't want to have helicopters and the fire department or police department, we would withhold those funds. So Congressman, and we commend Congressman Roybacher, by the way, a Republican, who's carrying this message forward, and we hope that Congress comes on board and restricts the DEA from doing this by the withdrawal of those funds that DEA is utilizing for this.
A Republican and also an avid surfer all of his life, so he's against the grain in a lot of ways. Somebody is bound to be watching this or has been following what's been going on on the council floor and saying, oh, wait a minute, medical marijuana dispensaries are not licensed and are not registered with the city of Los Angeles now. You're saying that you're going to not allow any more to be established during the course of this moratorium? Wait a minute, you can't stop something that you weren't already doing anyway.
That's correct. And what this ordinance is going to permit us to do is to prevent any future openings. It will be illegal to open any future medicinal marijuana facilities. There'll be action taken against any new establishments, so we are going to be enforcing that as well as bringing those within the next 60 days, once this ordinance takes effect, into compliance with the regulations that I previously stated.
Whether for or against the proposed new ordinance, how can our viewers and your constituents voice their concerns and their opinions?
They can contact their federal legislators, your congressional representatives, on the city council, the mayor, the chief of police. We all support this moratorium. We support medicinal marijuana here in the city of Los Angeles. We have compassion for people dying of cancer, for people who have AIDS and other debilitating illness and injuries. We have compassion for those people. They need to direct their phone calls or emails toward our federal officials, congressional representatives, members of Congress. We need them to contact them and tell them to back off the DEA from raiding medicinal marijuana facilities. The voters have spoken 11 years ago. We support that. Our attorney general supports what we are doing here in the city of Los Angeles. We're going to continue this effort, and we just ask the viewers to contact your federal elected representatives and tell them, encourage them, to tell the DEA to back off so we can come to a resolution with this and we can bring peace and tranquility back to the city of Los Angeles and not have the situation currently takes place where federal funds are being expended and the federal resources are being expended to go raid these places. They're not raiding hospitals, but they're raiding these medical marijuana distributing, and that's not right.
Finally, you've used the word compassion a number of times in the last few minutes. As for the people who are the consumers of medical marijuana, the people who have cancers that they're fighting and these other illnesses that you've talked about, do you have any advice or any, any message for them in terms of how they can continue to get that which in many cases they absolutely need to keep them alive and healthier?
That's true. I can only tell them the sincere interest of the city council, of our mayor, chief of police, chief Bratton, is we are trying to come up with a solution so it does not have to go underground, so they can go to these medicinal marijuana facilities and obtain that in a proper fashion, in a lawful fashion, without fearing arrest, without fearing those locations being shut down. And the owners of those properties where the leases are taking place, for them not to be intimidated and fearful by the DEA's letters that go to them informing them they'll be, their assets will be confiscated by the federal government, we need them to know that we're here to help them in their illness, through the crisis that they're experiencing, that we're very compassionate, very concerned about their health and the welfare that they have.
District Three Councilmember Dennis Zine, thanks very much for coming in and talking with us on Council Week in Review.
Thank you, Jack.
Again, for an ordinance to pass on the first reading, there must be 12 or more votes unanimously. There are only 11 council members present, and the ordinance will be held over one week when only a simple majority of eight is needed for its passage. L.A. City View is the government access cable channel for the city of Los Angeles, featuring live coverage of city council meetings and programming about city department services and events. Now, if you have suggestions or comments about any of the programs you see here on Channel 35 or would like to receive a free viewer guide, call our viewer hotline at 213-473-3978. If you'd like to obtain a copy of an audio or videotape of a council or committee meeting, your request may be made in person at room 395 in City Hall or by calling 213-978-1046 or, of course, by dialing 311, your one call to City Hall. And remember, you can watch all Los Angeles City Council meetings live in their entirety on Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Fridays beginning at 10 a.m. On Sundays, you can watch the replay of all the week's meetings, also beginning at 10 a.m. Well, that concludes our program for the week ending July 27, 2007. On behalf of Jim McBride and everyone here at Channel 35, I'm Jack Pogue-Joy. Thank you for watching, and please join us for the next Council Week in Review.
Where the heck is that leak coming from? That ought to do it.
Having a little get-together today?
Oh, hi, neighbor. Yeah, the in-laws are coming over. It's always great to see them, as long as they're not packing suitcases. Yeah, I'm just trying to fix this little leak before they get here. Mom can't stand wet grass, says it brings on her allergies.
About the water?
Hey, I'm no expert, but I know quite a bit about our tap water. Now, DWP does its darndest to keep those rates low, but of course, they have to factor in how much water they purchase, total customer consumption, new environmental standards. Did you know that because of the big snowpack in the Sierra this year, our water rates went down? Yeah, they didn't have to buy as much water as last year, so we get the savings.
No, I mean, aren't you worried about the water?
Worried? Are you kidding? The Department of Water and Power is forever working to improve the already excellent quality of our water supply. I mean, at this moment, there are crews all over the city, out in the streets, cleaning and relining those big pipes. And of course, there's that state-of-the-art ozonation purification plant they've got, and don't forget-
No, I'm talking about that water.
For more expert information about your water or Waterville, call the Los Angeles Department of Water and Power at 1-800-DWEP.
Need a recycling center? Call 311, the toll-free number for non-emergency services. 311, your one call to City Hall.
L.A. City View, Channel 35. Your city, your channel.
And a quorum, so today is Tuesday, July 31st. This is a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council. We meet Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Fridays at 10 o'clock. If you are unable to make it to the meeting, we encourage you to use our city phone as well as go on to the website. There are, as well, make an announcement. There are translation devices available on this side of the city council chambers if need be this morning. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Alakon, Cardenas, Gruel, Hahn, Weasel, Labanche, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendale, Smith, Weiss, Weston, Zine, Garcetti, ten members present and a quorum. Madam President.
Thank you. First item of business.
Approval of the minutes.
Yes, Mr. Smith moves, Mr. Zine seconds.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Those will be approved.
Madam President, this is Tuesday, and there's the flag saluted gendies for today's meeting.
Mr. Smith, if you could please...
Ladies and gentlemen, would you please rise and join with us in pledging allegiance to the flag of the United States of America? Pledge your hand out of your heart. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Mr. Clerk.
Madam President, do you wish to take up public comment at this time?
Actually, we'll go through the agenda first, and then we will go to public comment.
On the regular agenda, item one is the bulky item collection fee ordinance that's noted for public hearing, and you do have a card on that.
That item will be called special.
Items two through 23 are items which public hearings have been held. Item two is confirmation of a commissioner. Do you wish to hold that on the desk?
We will hold that on the desk. Next, so any specials, colleagues? Two through 23? Any specials? If not, Madam Clerk, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the votes. Ten ayes. Those items have been approved. Next items?
And the ordinances will go over one week.
Thank you.
Items 24 through 31 are items which public hearings have not been held. Ten votes are required for consideration, and there are cards on item 30.
That item will be called special. Now, there's specials, colleagues? If not, Madam Clerk, please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the votes. Ten ayes. Did you want 15 to be called special, or you wanted to go forth with?
No, special, just to have a discussion in this moment.
Okay, so we need to reconsider that item. Madam Clerk, we can reconsider item number 15. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the votes. Ten ayes. That item will be called special. Next items?
On the continuation agenda, items 32 and 33 are items noted for public hearing.
Thank you. We do not have any cards on those items. Any specials on 32 or 33? If not, Madam Clerk, please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the votes. Ten ayes. Those items have been approved. Next items?
Item 34 is an item which public hearing has not been held. Ten votes are required for consideration.
Okay. Mr. Rosendale would like to call that special. Next item?
And item 35 is the closed session item. Do you wish to hold that on the desk?
Yes, we will hold that on the desk as well.
That would take care of the items called special. Do you wish to go back to public comment?
Thank you. If we could first take our commissioner, and then we will go to public comment.
Item two is the reappointment of Reverend Murray to the Los Angeles Homeless Services Authority.
Reverend Murray, would you like to join us at Good morning, nice to have you here in City Council. Appreciate your willingness to serve again. I'd like to acknowledge Ms. Perry.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I know Mr. Weston will say a few words also. It was a real pleasure to speak with Reverend Murray this morning, and I... Mr. Weston thanked him for his service, as did I, and we're very grateful that he has willingness to continue to give his input and expertise from his many years of ministry. And I urge a unanimous vote.
Thank you. Mr. Rosendale?
Yes, I just want to stand up and acknowledge one of the great leaders of Los Angeles. Truly, we are blessed to have you on the commission. You're inspirational, you're visionary, and you give everybody hope, and we look forward to your continued service with us.
Thank you, thank you.
Mr. Zine?
I just wanted to second Jen Perry's motion. I have unanimous support for Chip Murray for that position. Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Reverend Murray. We appreciate again your commitment. This is such an important issue to the city of Los Angeles, the homeless issue, and your years of service to the city, and particularly for those less fortunate. I just want to thank you for your willingness to serve.
Thank you, Madam.
And so, no further ado, Mr. Weston, would you like to add something?
Thank you, Madam President and members. We had an opportunity... First of all, I want to thank Ms. Perry for jumping in and pinch hitting when I was in the back room trying to eat some fruit, Pastor Murray. At least it's healthy. The committee had the pleasure to chat with the pastor this morning, and we, with whole heartedly, would ask every member to support the reappointment of an individual who has provided the city of Los Angeles with service for numerous years in a variety of different areas. But I know where it relates to the homeless concern, that Pastor Murray has always... This has always been high on his agenda, and I just think having him on this... On LASSA brings us added credibility, affords us the opportunity to have people objectively listen to what this commission reports. I would ask all members to vote aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, if you would open the roll on this appointment, close the roll, tabulate the votes. You love an ayes. Thank you very much. We'll now go to the public comment period. Again, if there are individuals who have filled out cards on item 30, you will be taken on item number 30, and those regarding general comments should be, if they're directed to that, should speak about something other than item number 30. Our first speaker is Tom Patterson, followed by Chuck Tenen, followed by Lucille Saunders.
Good morning, Mrs. Gruel and members of the council. I'm here to speak on the double standard and environmental impact reviews. This morning in the LA Times, the reporter didn't quite get it right when she talked about your concern for environmental impact reports. We've been trying for a year to get you to order an environmental impact report on multiple projects in Valley Village, two concurrent projects in particular, one that has 120,000 square feet of surface and 390,000 square feet of construction on a street that's substandard that has only two travel lanes, that's the on-ramp and off-ramp exit to the Hollywood freeway, and that's within 500 feet of the 3,000 school, North Hollywood High School. You've been totally missing in action, Mrs. Gruel. You've had a traffic study that you've sat on since March. We've had to take the initiative, and by the developers contacting me and saying, "Can't we work something out?", I said, "Yes, we can work something out. We'll work out mitigations." And that's what we're doing. We're having to do the job that the city should have done, that the city should have done in ordering an environmental impact report on cumulative impacts. I'm glad that you're finding environmental impact religion, and I hope that'll be your policy in the future. Thank you.
Mr. Tenen?
Good morning, Madam President and City Council members. Four months ago, Wendy Gruel put forth, introduced a motion to do a cumulative street study on West Magnolia Boulevard, the site of major development projects with thousands of square feet there. She stated that it was a hazardous area and a hazardous street. Yet, what happened to the motion that Bernard Parks seconded? Yet, there's a massive development going on, but what happened? In an article in the Daily News today, Gruel wants new traffic calculations. Well, she said, "We must acknowledge that increased density because it increases congestion." Well, try thousands of square feet in this little area on Magnolia. And yet, the Department of Transportation says, "Gee, we could create a model." Well, if the Department of Transportation can't estimate the traffic impact on Magnolia to date, where all this is happening, and they're using misleading figures, well, what about creating a model for our street? And you can't fix something if you don't study it. So, what I'm saying there is, if this motion was introduced, then do something. Don't build first, fix later, or don't fix at all on a street that's going to have a horrific impact because it's a bad situation, and the people that live there see it, and what's starting now is going to be a terrible thing. It needs traffic calculations. It needs a cumulative street study. It needs some lights that they don't want to put on because there's accidents, and they want to do it after it's too late and when people get hurt. This is a small stub standard street. If that motion went into effect, when is it going to be used? Dot Engineer turned down Wendy Gruel's motion and said it isn't that bad. Well, it is that bad, and when is the motion going to go forth? And they're going to do the street study before they put these horrifying projects together. Thank you.
Thank you. Lucille Saunders should be followed by Elaine Brown, followed by Candida Marez.
Good morning. I'm Lucille Saunders, representing the La Brea Willoughby Coalition. We are the legal arm of the Melrose Neighborhood Association, and we applaud council members Gruel and Rosendale, and urge the city council's speedy review and passage of this motion to establish more realistic traffic standards and impacts of new developments. Traffic, bad traffic, has been long recognized as a significant consequence of unbridled planning and overdevelopment in the city. Yet, a common thought expressed by developers and city officials has been, "Traffic is already at status F." And I appreciate the council's attention when we're talking about this important land use and traffic matter. Traffic is already at status F, and this is the worst indicator on a scale of 1 to F, and a major problem throughout Los Angeles. So, what the officials say is, "So, it won't get better." So, they've simply allowed traffic to get worse through the current planning processes. Traffic is already at gridlock where I live in Council District 5. Yet, my neighborhood association is now in the second year of asking for greater city oversight of traffic as a significant negative impact of overdevelopment and in the entire planning process of the proposed La Brea Gateway Project adjacent to our low-rise residential neighborhood. The true travesty is, the developers' paid consultants' report, including traffic impact studies of these huge overdevelopments, have been too readily and fully accepted by city planning. We, your constituents, have had to spend our money, our time, to challenge these reports which use complex and inadequate traffic equations. These outmoded traffic measures are compounded by each project being looked at in piecemeal fashion rather than cumulatively in the face of all other projects affecting the same traffic patterns.
Thank you very much.
So, please keep us apprised, and we will continue in our support of this motion.
Thank you. Elaine Brown, followed by Candida Marez, followed by Oscar Johnson.
I have a brief statement to make, but I'll make it under item 30.
Thank you. Candido?
Good morning, Madam President, council members. I'll have to kind of change my words around because of the restrictions regarding item 30. Candida Marez, a member of the Valleys Neighborhood Council, speaking for himself today, and a proud resident of the 12th District, where we believe that from Chatsworth to San Pedro, from the east side to the west side, that we are one city and one people, and that whatever takes place in one community affects us all, if it's not a good project, if it's a public safety issue. And Madam President, I do have to leave early, and I know that you've stated that we couldn't talk about item 30, but as you know, my health condition, I'm not able to stay long. But I just want to say that in the 90s, there was a Home Depot that wanted to come to Chatsworth and Zelsa. You recall that, Mr. Smith? And we fought that. And today, we have a beautiful development there because we waited and we fought for it. So, I'm asking you folks to say no to Home Depot and wait for something better for your community because you deserve better. Thank you, Madam President and council members.
Thank you. Oscar Johnson, followed by Richard Kearns and Elliot Katz.
Good morning, Madam, City Council. My name is Oscar Johnson. I'm proactive for the city, concerned citizens of the city of Los Angeles, and I'm speaking about racism and politics. I see that they have, in this 21st century, that the African-American males is experiencing worse form of genocide we have experienced since we've been free from physical slavery. And, but I think we should develop a government that can care for all living people in society because what happened after Martin Luther King was very unacceptable, and I think that King Jr. should be closed down. And in the homeless situation downtown should be more careful, better, and our politicians should be more accountable for what they're doing and the resource that they are receiving should go directly to more to the citizen that needs it because we need a jobs in Los Angeles. Our situation in Los Angeles is very detrimental, economic, racism, and we should press for political reform. We should replace all y'all people in there that are not doing their job, we're not connected with y'all, y'all not connected with us. You're only connected with the people that get support you, and our mayor have many fallen projects. Our police department, I think we should have random drug testers, random alcohol testers, and we should have random psychological evaluation testers of who in charge of us. We should be more identified, should be more open that what we're doing as an open government, and should be a free society for all people, but to seem as though the people that in charge of our liberties and our freedom, they are our oppressors. And we're facing today, on the 21st century, with malls and economics, and our representation in government have really fallen us through... And our mayors have different MTA buses riding the street downtown Skid Row illegally, not coming out under his supervision, and he have many fallen projects. Our mayor have failed Los Angeles, he not doing nothing for the city of Los Angeles, breaking it up, to bring it up. He have homeless people clean up the city of Los Angeles for nothing, and I think he have money and the funds to do that, and not directly to our, to the city for the homeless to uplift them.
Thank you very much. Richard Kearns, Richard Kearns? Not here. Elliot Katz? Richard Kearns, Elliot Katz, okay. Reverend Glenn Roland? Be followed by Arnold Sacks.
Good morning, Madam President and members of the council. I don't know what's happened to Mr. Kearns, I saw him here earlier, but he is ill. I have basically an open letter... Let me get the audio down on this mic a little bit. Thank you. An open letter to Los Angeles City Council. Today, a grave was marked with only a number because he had no one to care for him in his last days. He could not stand at the protest and council meetings anymore to beg you to do the right thing. His body was just too weak and weary. His name is no longer important. All of his pain and suffering have now gone. Thirty-eight years and 12 days ago, Neil Armstrong said, "One small step for man, one giant leap for mankind." Tomorrow, on August 1st, 2007, you will make a giant leap for humankind. You will show that the city council of Los Angeles, California, will use both intelligence and compassion in making the appropriate decisions. What you will stand for tomorrow when voting on the ICO for medical marijuana dispensaries will mark the beginning of a new era in our history. I pray that each and every council member will take a look at what is being done in our sister cities in this great state to provide safe access for their patients and to make an informed decision, not the scare tactics. One of those decisions that you can wake up in the morning and look at yourself in the mirror and say, "I did the right thing." The city of Los Angeles has lost over 150,000 citizens to diseases such as AIDS and cancer alone last year. I asked the city to pass a referendum to make Los Angeles, California, the most compassionate city in America. Then we will rightly deserve our name once again as the city of angels. Madam President and council members, you have the power and the obligation to make this dream come true. Pass the ICO, but please allow us, the patients, caregivers, and city government to work together on a plan to provide the medicine for those patients who need it and provide it safely. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker will be Reverend Glenn Roland?
That was me.
Okay, thank you. All right, Mr. Arnold Sacks?
Good morning, council members. Thank you very much, Arnold Sacks. A few things from last week that I didn't finish up with. At the MTA board meeting on last Thursday, was no city council representative available to show up. And for Mr. Rosendale, I would kindly ask that you check with either Councilman Reyes, who sits on the Foothill Gold Line Extension Board, or with Supervisor Molina to find out how the east side extension was funded for construction without a corresponding construction authority at almost $150 million per mile. The gold line costs $60 million per mile, and the expo line, $75 million per mile. And finally, I wanted to speak on special events today, but I didn't get a card in time, so I use some public time now. Because my understanding that public event, special event items are public property, used for private events or public events, with the corresponding fees waived and reimbursed back to the city. So, I would really ask that the lease agreement at LAX between the authorized taxi cab supervision and non- supervision, a nonprofit organization, and the Canadian Truck Firm, that they get $27,000 per month for leasing city property, that the city receives no funding, be listed as a special, special event, as that is, public property being used with no reimbursement to the city and the nonprofit organization, authorized taxicab supervision, getting $27,000 for using public property. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Let's cut away to the San Fernando Valley for a minute for Sharon Brewer and Donna Peirman.
Warning, please. Sharon Brewer, Recreation and Parks Contracts and Permits. City Council, please investigate the awarding of contracts and permits by Recreation and Parks. I've spoken about the concession agreement to operate the Sepulveda Basin Mobile Food Concession, which was issued to the party in the closed session item back in February 2001, with specific amounts stated for each month. November 30, 2005, an extension agreement was issued to this person and shall continue on a month-to-month basis pending release of a new RFP and execution of a new concession agreement. Again, the RFP was to be put out back in November 2005, one and a half years ago. When this extension was issued in November 2005, Recreation and Parks made no adjustment to the monthly amounts determined by Rec. and Parks back in February 2001. Today is July 31, 2007, and the city is still getting amounts determined back in 2001, over six years ago. This person has been doing business with the city since back in the 1990s, and when he enters into a contract, he knows exactly what he is doing. Some Recreation and Parks General Manager reports regarding this individual.
Excuse me, Madam President, this is an item that is agendized today, so general public comment should be reserved for items not agendized.
Ma'am, if you could please comment on items that are not on the agenda during public comment, and if you wish to speak on an item that is on the agenda, you'll have the opportunity to do that in just a moment.
As far as I know, you didn't call that item special, so that's why I did public comment on it.
We're in public comment right now. Public comment is reserved for items that are not on the agenda.
Thank you.
Going back to the San Fernando Valley for Ms. Peirman.
Okay. My name is Donna Peirman. First of all, I'd like to say I'd like to know why announcements aren't allowed. Is that a way you won't have to tell us when you're, where you're going? Not a nuts San Pedro incident, right? If you don't have to tell us, we won't know. I had a very bad last week. I had lost my person on the wonderful, on this, our so-called wonderful mass transit going to you. Luckily, our wonderful parking cop did everything to help me. She even stopped the bus, eventually showed up in Culver City, which was nice, but it took two and two and a half hours to go from West Los Angeles to Culver City. That's crazy. That's why one bus only runs once an hour, and we need to fix our mass transit. We need to keep the CRA in check. They can't just build any project they want without any consideration for the people involved. And I'm also against Proposition R, which gave you the third term, which you confused people by saying that limit the people, limit our councilmen down to two terms, when, I mean, three terms, limit them down to three terms when it was already down to two terms, of course, people not knowing that they did it to terms, thinking they were limiting them. And so I'm also against that. Okay.
Thank you very much. Back to...
I'm Marion Fogler, I was supposed to be next.
Ms. Fogler, please proceed.
Thank you. She meant that the, that the, it was supposed to reform lobbyists coming to City Hall, but it made it looser. So obviously, you loosened up the laws here, so make it easier to gain more money and also have an extra term, which should have been, through the initiative process, that have been put on the ballot by 15 members, which to me is a dictatorial regime, which is called a stocracy instead of a democracy. Anyway, I'm going to tell, Mr. Sacks asked the other day about CRA. Well, it is a private agency, but it receives public money, and it also gets public land, sometimes through acquisitions, or sometimes the city council will just let them build things on public land, like the Grand Avenue Project, and your wonderful, your Roman Catholic Church on First and Street. Anyway, the, so he, they got, they got all sweetheart deals. When you're talking about people getting private projects on public land, especially when they get awnings and free fixing of their property, they get sweetheart deals to support the CRA, the agency, I call it, the one who's taking up all our money from the city, and that's why we have a big deficit and bankruptcy. By the way, the address is 354 South Spring Street. You can go down on this eighth floor, I don't remember, I think it's the third Thursday of the month they meet. But they have to answer to the public, they have to have it open, because they receive public money and public land and all that. So it's, they're working with all private entrepreneurs, developers, and that's where this, all the politicians get this money. They get the money from all these luxurious projects, and they don't care about the impact on our, on our cities, traffic, infrastructure, and all that. So I'm just letting you know how bad it is with the CRAs.
Thank you very much, ma'am. Back to City Hall, our next speaker is Mr. Matthew Dowd. Mr. Matthew Dowd, followed by Michael Hunt.
Thank you very much, Matt Dowd and Michael Hunt. We just won a huge lawsuit against the city of Los Angeles over Venice Beach vending, and you know why? Because they outlawed all T-shirts, yet quite plainly, we can see political T-shirts here that convey a message. And that's what's protected by federal law in this country, and I'll tell you why it's protected, because the Supreme Court rules that you can even sell any item that's protected with, that's inextricably intertwined with your message, and their message is very clear, it's likely to be understood by the viewer. Mastro Vincenzo is a court case in New York, federal law, once again, and the court said that before you outlaw any item, you need to take that item before a court and have a court determine whether that has communicative value. So we won that one, because you outlawed everything, and we told you that you couldn't do that. Now there's a new one they're bringing out. I got to tell you this, Mr. Zine and Mr. City Attorney, because the city attorney is now, they want to make it a political speech zone. Well, guess what? Matt Dowd is now, has been for a while, a political advocate. I'm going down there with my political speech. I'm going to set up a big sign, and I'm going to say, "I sued the city of Los Angeles over inextricably intertwined, here's all the legal precedents, here's how we did it, and it was all about this $1 incentive, oh, it's a dollar a pack." And the Supreme Court says that's inextricably intertwined with the speech, so you cannot say it's donation only. They're still stuck on this, "Oh, you've got to take a donation." No, these people can go to Venice Beach, set up a table, talk about Home Depot, right, and say $5 for a T-shirt, and that's legal.
Thank you very much, sir. Next speaker, Mr. Michael Hunt.
Wow, that's a hard act to follow. I'm here for the people that want to work. How many people want to work? Just work. Stand up and clap. Stand up and clap. Come on, we can't hear you guys. Right, if you want to work, stand up and clap. That's what America's about, community-based policing, finding jobs for people who wants to work. I agree with that totally. Hi, my name is Michael Hunt, and I'm back on the 4215. The city attorney has come back with, oh, screwed it up five or six times now. I wonder, you know, what school did they go to? It just doesn't make any sense. The management, the whole team of the 4215, you know, if you want to work, let the people work. If you want to try to police people for working, then you're going to have vigorous problems. But as the city attorney screws it up again, and it'll probably have you guys in a fifth lawsuit in the next three or four weeks, you guys probably have two more lawsuits filed against you guys for what they're trying to do. It really doesn't make any sense. We tried to tell you guys, you know, what and how, what it really is, and what the federal judge is saying. So on that note, you know, we just want you guys to really listen to us. You don't have to listen to the city attorney no more, we can replace him. That's the size of it. He's getting you guys in a whole lot of trouble. I believe people should work every day. If you want to work, clap your hands again. That's what you guys got to stand up and tell them, it's called community-based policing, keeping the people out of trouble.
Our next speaker is Mr. Richard Kraus. Mr. Richard Kraus, followed by Elliot Katz. Next speaker is Mr. Richard Kraus. Is Mr. Kraus present?
Excuse me, might that be Kearns?
Probably, it's just hard to read.
I'm sorry, I was feeling ill a moment ago and downstairs. My name, thank you for letting me speak. My name is Richard Kearns. I'm a 56-year-old gay Angelino alive with AIDS for more than 20 years. I'm a medical cannabis patient and advocate. I am a new media citizen journalist and poet. I heard the word allegedly in the news report yesterday. It's been a while, allegedly. Whether LAPD spokespeople could tell if that was really a DEA T-shirt Officer Dennis Packer was allegedly wearing on the internet broadcast video. It was, there are probably thousands of photos of Packer decked out in his name brand. Please, I urge you as a city council, do not let Officer Packer rob you of the opportunity to make public policy decisions every time he's in costume. Enact a policy of noncooperation with the DEA in matters of the medical cannabis clinics. Stop the cross-deputization immediately. This is not the rule of law here. These are the rule, this is, are the rules of engagement. Show your gun, shout, shove, shoot and pillage. Is this how citizens should be treated? Is this martial law, or is this community government? Please help us out, please stop further raids. Thank you very much. Namaste.
Thank you very much, sir. Mr. Elliot Katz.
Good morning, my name is Elliot Katz. I'm a resident of Los Angeles. First of all, I, I don't want to burn this issue out, it's very important still. I felt like I watched History in the Making last week when the medical marijuana issue was dealt with. I'm a patient, I have no financial motivations or interest in any of this, it's just, just a matter of my health. There's something that's been excluded from all of the language that we've been using, and that it has to come from somewhere. And there are growers, there are suppliers, and they're being left out of the loop. And truly, without them, I don't live, you know? So I'm asking the council to start considering offering the suppliers and the growers the same courtesy and support you showed the dispensaries and the patients last week. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, sir. And that marks the end of our public comment period. This public comment is now closed. Mr. Clerk, what is our next item?
Item one was called special for cards from the public.
All right. Mr. Jim McQuiston.
Let me tell you, in our area, we have a nice mix. We have small family houses, we have giant apartments, we have Section 8, and we all get together. The only problem is, when people move out of those giant apartments, the managers find all sorts of furniture left. And since it costs them to have it hauled away, they'll put that furniture out in front of one of the smaller units, because they have city services. And it sits there, mattresses, furniture, all sorts of stuff, and no one picks it up. And now, we're going to have a system where the city will stop that. We won't have to have the city attorney going after those managers anymore. It's going to save us a lot of infrastructure. And so this is something that's, the time has come, let's get on with it.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Mr. Matthew Dowd.
Thank you. Just want to let people know that we're having trouble getting police in this town because of these trash fees that are being collected, but the money's not ending up where it's supposed to. And I also want to mention that anybody who wants to fight the city on any of these ordinances or make a protest, English language is your best friend, fighting the city because they use things like this, because it can be seen with certainty that there is no possibility that the activity in question may have a significant effect on the environment. So it's handy to understand that kind of talk. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That closes the comment on this item. No speakers in the queue, so, Mr. Clerk, would you please, Mr. Rosendahl, did you want to comment?
Aye.
Okay, great. Please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Uh, next item, Mr. Clerk.
And the ordinance will go over one week.
Thank you.
Item 15 called special by Councilmember Rosendahl.
Mr. Rosendahl.
Thank you, Madam President. Item 15, could we have someone from the city attorney's office come on up and talk about this? Item 15, folks, is brush clearance. We are in a climate change reality, and we need to prepare ourselves for potential fires as there are fires every day. There is an agreement between Caltrans and our fire department. Mr. Weiss led the charge on the council floor at the motion, and Assemblymember Michael Fuhr provided leadership with Caltrans. The bottom line is, there's common land around the area that needs to be cleared so we don't have fires. And this is a great cooperation between the state and our fire department, and I'd like to have an update from you as to how that cooperation is going right now, and are we comfortable that all those acreages that are under joint jurisdiction are going to be cleared as we are in a fire season, and will be in a greater fire season when the Santa Anas come in, in the fall.
Good morning, I'm Janet Jackson, General Counsel for the Fire Department, and specifically to address your concerns, Councilman. The MOA has been entered into between Caltrans and the city, the fire department. And Caltrans is fully cooperating with the fire department, and they have achieved a lot of the brush clearance and are continuing to clear all of the brush. It's been a situation of full cooperation with Caltrans and the fire department, working with them to assist them by providing access to some of their brush clearance contractors for property that Caltrans does not have contractors to clear for.
Good, so you're feeling pretty good about it?
Yes.
Good. And you know, I say to all my constituents who live in the 11th District, clear that brush in the canyons and in the hillsides and around your house, because it is only going to be more serious as we get into the fire season. Appreciate that cooperation. Thank you, Madam President.
You're welcome. Thank you, Mr. Rosendahl. Thank you very much. No further speakers in the queue? Okay, that's it. All right, so, Mr. Clerk, please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk, next order, next item?
Item 30 called special for cards from the public.
All right. Before we go forward, Ms. Gruehl, would you like to say a few words?
Yes, colleagues, we are going to have a public hearing, and I'd like to request that we have a 10-minute public hearing on both sides. we have a 10-minute public hearing on both sides on this item. But colleagues, before we open up the public comment, for my motion to assert jurisdiction over the Sunland Home Depot case, I feel that it's important to set a little bit of context there, and I want to take a minute to do that. We are here today to decide whether or not the city council should assert jurisdiction over this matter. The decision involves one very simple question. Is the remodeling work proposed for the Sunland Home Depot store a project as defined in the Foothill Boulevard specific corridor plan? That sounds kind of technical, bureaucratic, whatever it may be, but it is a very simple question. Is it defined as a project? At the recent North Valley Planning Commission meeting just last week, there were several issues brought up during a seven-hour hearing.
Oh, wow.
Seven hours. A lot of kudos to those planning commissioners who were there for that amount of time. But a lot of the questions that were asked were not relevant to the one question I just outlined for you, is this a project or not? So I hope today that the individuals who come and speak will address the issue of whether this is a project or not in Sunland Tahanga, because that is the issue before us. I will go into greater detail after the public comment, but again, this is about asserting jurisdiction. I hope all of you will understand that there's been enough questions raised, that it is our responsibility to 245 this and have it come back to the Planning and Land Use Committee as well as to the full city council. So Madam President, if you would, we'll go to the two sides.
Thank you very much. And again, that will be 10 minutes for each side, and if the speakers take two minutes each, that means you'll only have five speakers within 10 minutes, so it's up to you to decide how to allocate your time. The first speaker will be Joe Barrett, followed by Nancy Pistole.
Good morning, Madam President, council members. My name is Joe Barrett, and I represent the grassroots group, Sunland Tahanga Alliance, and the No Home Depot Campaign. We will have three speakers for you today. Nancy Pistol, Robert Kuhn, and Mark Sellers, our legal counsel.
Good morning, honorable city council members.
Okay, excuse me for one second. What we'll have to do then, we're going to let them allocate their time however they wish. Okay, go ahead.
My name is Nancy Pistol, representing the Sunland Tahanga Alliance. The Sunland Tahanga Alliance No Home Depot Campaign is an authentic grassroots group which was created to inform, educate, and bring people together about land use and planning issues that affect our community. Home Depot applied and received permits for tenant improvements to remodel a former Kmart building. We appealed that action, and on March 9, 2007, Associate Zoning Administrator Gary Buher, acting on behalf of the Director of Planning, Gail Goldberg, released his findings that the Home Depot tenant improvement permit was issued in error. In his 32-page written determination, he declared, quote, "That the construction activity is herein determined to be a project that shall be subject to project permit compliance review with the provisions of the Foothill Boulevard corridor specific plan pursuant to Section 11.5.7-C of the Los Angeles Municipal City Code," unquote. On page 30, he states, quote, "It appears that the weight of the detailed evidence provided by the appellant overwhelmingly supports the conclusion that structural alterations have occurred that are beyond that which should be reasonably classified as tenant improvements for an interior remodel. This conclusion is supported not only by detailed expert observations and quantifiable data, but also by casual observation of the average person. With a new floor, roof, and structural supports, the renovation is changing virtually everything except the mere facade of the walls that have been propped up to keep from falling down. The extent of the renovation is simply too complex and extensive to be considered a mere tenant improvement," end of quote. On July 19, at a North Valley Area Planning Commission public hearing, both the Department of City Planning and the Department of Building and Safety graciously admitted mistakes and errors in issuing the tenant improvement permits last year. After listening to six hours of testimony and with only a brief discussion amongst themselves, the commissioners granted the appeal in favor of Home Depot overturning the zoning administrator's decision. Simply said, the decision of the North Valley Area Planning Commission was flawed because they did not consider the facts that make this renovation a project. We are here today to request that you, the Los Angeles City Council, reexamine this questionable decision of the North Valley Area Planning Commission concerning Home Depot's appeal. Thank you.
Good morning, honorable council members. My name is Bob Keown. I am a homeowner and 10-year resident of the Sunland Tahanga community. We are outraged that Home Depot is continuing their mission to circumvent the Foothill Boulevard corridor specific plan. If the Home Depot can derail our specific plan, then the existing local regulations in the neighborhoods that you represent are also at risk. Any corporation or business with enough money and influence can destroy your specific plan, community design overlay, or historic preservation overlay zone. If Home Depot is allowed to proceed, the distinction between what is a ministerial action or a discretionary action becomes blurred. Then certainly, the distinction of what is a project or not a project is also blurred. The zoning administrator stated in his written determination that even though the firm of Latham &amp; Watkins attempted to refute our claims, we provided extensive expert testimony and written documentation from structural engineers and other experts that proved that the structural alterations are occurring. On page 30, the zoning administrator listed the following findings. Number one, the slab floor is being replaced with a significantly thicker floor that will support a heavier rack system. Number two, the slab floor will be tied to the foundation and become a supporting member for an integrated functional structure. Number three, the roof support or framing beams are being structurally altered and strengthened in order to support a new roof and more HVAC equipment. Number four, the roof is being replaced and strengthened to support more HVAC equipment. Number five, exterior doors have been removed and portions of exterior walls have been opened. Clearly, structural alterations have occurred. The topic is whether the construction work constitutes a project, and the fact is that it does. This is about land use policy and implementation. This is not about tax revenue, jobs, or any other distractions manufactured by the Home Depot. We are asking you, the Los Angeles City Council, to make a definite ruling to approve Councilmember Gruhl's motion and assert jurisdiction over this case. Thank you for your careful consideration.
Thank you very much. Mr. Mark Sellers?
Good morning, Madam President, council members. My name's Mark Sellers with the Jackson DeMarco Law Firm. I've been assisting the No Home Depot campaign for quite some time now, trying to get at the bottom of what I call the under-the-radar screen approach that Home Depot has chosen. Home Depot, the wealthiest, one of the wealthiest corporations in the country, the largest home improvement center, has basically chosen an approach that does not have a public hearing, an approach that does not mitigate the impacts of this project, and an approach that basically does not allow the project to come up to the standards of the specific plan. When I first looked at the project, I quickly saw that this is an item that we're going to need structural engineers to look at. There are three triggers under the definition of a project. One is, is there any exterior modifications? We feel there are. There is a garden center that is having a major fencing placed on it, that's an exterior modification. There are 57 air conditioning units being put on the roof of this facility, that's a major exterior modification. We then looked at structural alterations, which was one of the key issues. We looked at the definition of the city code, which is, is any support member in that building being modified or changed? We then went and showed the planning commission that 110 16-inch beams, 28 feet long, were being modified at 57 different locations in that roof. And those beams were necessary to support the air conditioning, new air conditioning units that weighs thousands of pounds. When that hearing was over, as Councilmember Gruhl indicated, after seven hours and a very short deliberation, three commissioners voted to grant the appeal, and the reasons that were stated in the record, which were the findings, which are very important from a legal point of view, they need to support that decision. One commissioner indicated that she felt that this was probably a project, she felt that the main reason that she couldn't, needed to support the appeal was that the city had given misinformation to the applicant. At one point, they had said it did not need to go through permits compliance, and later they changed their mind. The zoning administrator's office indicated that the city changed its mind because after we showed them all the details, they agreed with us. We followed the process. That finding was incorrect, it was inadequate, had nothing to do with that hearing. Another finding was made by another commissioner, that no change of use had occurred and the size of the building didn't increase. Well, those weren't issues before the planning commission. So you have two of the three votes have inadequate findings or missed the point. And the point, as I say, is basically whether structural alterations were made to this building or not, or whether exterior modifications were made to the building or not, or whether the value of the work, which we feel is about $5 million, exceeded 50% of the replacement value, and we feel that it did. And those were the reasons, and those were the factors, and those should have been the findings to support the planning commission, and they weren't made. Would that respond to any questions? Or?
We have a few more minutes. Ms. Tommy Lynn Bowling. And for the remainder, I will then read the names of the individuals who showed up today into the record after your 10 minutes are up.
Good morning, council members. My name is Mary Benson. I'm vice president of the Sun Valley Area Neighborhood Council.
Excuse me, hold the clock, please. I didn't, I called Tommy Lynn Bowling.
She's yielding her time because we're speaking on, as a neighborhood...
Have you filled out a card?
Yes, I'm in there, I'm in there someplace.
And your name again is?
Mary Benson, vice president, Sun Valley Area Neighborhood Council.
Please proceed and start the clock again.
I'm here, council members, to ask that you support your colleague and the staffs of both the City Planning Department and the Department of Building and Safety and overturn an emotional decision by the North Area Valley Planning Commission. Home Depot piecemealed to avoid a planning review. This could create a tremendous loophole in the building entitlement process big enough to drive a bus through. Please support Wendy Gruhl's motion to invoke Charter Amendment 245.
Thank you very much, ma'am. 10 minutes is up, and before we start, the other side, as a courtesy, so that we can acknowledge individuals who took the time to come here today, I will read their names into the record. Mr. Mark Siegel, Ms. Elaine Brown, Carol Pettigrew-Standall, Francine McCartney, Lydia Grant, David Kane, Roberta Cole, Alice Devant, Mary Louise Ekman, Cindy Clegg-Horn, Dan McManus, Nina Royale, I believe it's George Weddington-McCreary, Jim Alger, Alan Rodriguez, Alexandra Squires, Sandra Moore, Nicole Penneke, Jose Yuslis, Peter Mowen, Karen Glaser, Bud Terusa, writing is hard to read, but it looks like Hessek Amirian, Terry Halechurch, Sharon Martin, Valentin Crowe-Toru, Sylvia Crowe-Toru, Tom Patterson, Sharon Weisman, Jancee, Ms., it's hard to read again, but Ms. Solian, Solidad Garcia. And I want to thank you all for coming down and speaking, or coming down and entering, allowing us to enter your names to the record. And now, Mr. Clerk, if you would, begin the 10 minutes for the other side, and I will begin calling their names. First speaker will be Cindy Starrett. And again, that's 10 minutes for each side.
Council members, I'm Cindy Starrett from Latham &amp; Watkins, on behalf of Home Depot. I'd like to say that this is a momentous occasion. It's the first time this full city council has ever been asked to overturn a building permit. This is a building permit that was issued by Building and Safety after 22 separate reviews of the plans. After five separate times, the council office asked for the plans to be sent to their office, and they were given to the opponent's experts. The opponents sent all their comments back to Building and Safety. Building and Safety had a five-hour meeting in the community and answered every question. The zoning administrator erred and abused his discretion, and that was the finding of the Area Planning Commission. They were asked to decide this locally, they made that decision in front of 700 people. They found the process had not been followed, they found the appeal had been accepted late. They found this process has dragged on for a year. The city exposes itself to significant legal liability when it does not follow the rules, it doesn't allow the integrity and objectivity of the building permit process to proceed. Taking jurisdiction here would set an extreme precedent for what businesses need to do to remodel a building, to bring it up to code, to make it energy efficient. The city needs to encourage such reinvestment, not to discourage it by taking jurisdiction today and reviewing this permit. The city creates liability exposure when the permit process cannot go forward, and we ask you to deny jurisdiction today.
Mr. Bill Delvac.
Honorable council members, Bill Delvac of Latham &amp; Watkins proudly on behalf of Home Depot. The council should not assert jurisdiction over a ministerial building permit to remodel one store, or there will be no certainty to the permit process. Do it hardware, a competitor of Home Depot is partly funding the campaign to keep Home Depot out. Competitors should not be permitted to manipulate the process for anti-competitive reasons. Accepting jurisdiction here will only encourage this abuse and will retard economic growth throughout the city, thereby eroding badly-needed tax revenues to fund essential public services. Opponents even testified that they should upend Home Depot outside the city of LA in order to improve their homes, thereby sending their sales tax revenues to other jurisdictions. In fact, Home Depot is welcomed by many in the community who see the jobs that it will bring. Today, you will hear from a few of the many people who spoke at the APC. I am offended by the attack on our supporters, decent, hard-working people, many of whom don't own cars, for voluntarily taking their time to participate here. Would all of our supporters please stand up? I trust the council joins me in welcoming their participation here today. Reversing the APC would have a chilling effect on investment, especially in neighborhoods that need it most. Therefore, we respectfully urge you to deny jurisdiction. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Francis Park.
Council members, I'm Francis Park from Parkville, Iowa, representing Home Depot. Home Depot has been working for over two years to reuse an existing vacant building in the Sunland area. During that time, Home Depot has followed every rule and done everything right in this matter. Over $2 million has already been spent in reliance on the permit, and the building remodel work is over 90% complete. Home Depot worked with planning and building over an eight-month period from November 2005 to July 2006 to establish the scope of work for this building permit. Building and planning reviewed the plans at least 22 times. They determined that this is fully consistent with the Foothill Boulevard specific plan. Home Depot responded to every comment submitted. Nothing here has been done without city oversight and guidance. Building and Safety applied the same rules here that are applied to every set of plans. The same definition of structural alterations is in other specific plans, and there are 140,000 building permits issued each year. Planning and building both separately signed off on the permit, concluding that the work here was not a project. You have copies of these documents. This conclusion was also confirmed by two different outside building experts, one of whom will be speaking later, and most recently by the Area Planning Commission. The APC held two public hearings on this matter, listened to over seven hours of testimony, and reviewed thousands of pages of documents. The APC determined that the ZIA acted in error and abused its discretion on both the process and the substance. There was substantial evidence supporting the APC decision. We ask you today, the city council, to respect the city process and deny the 245 motion. Thank you.
Next speaker is Mr. Rick Green.
Madam President, members of the city council, my name is Rick Green. I'm the Los Angeles real estate manager for the Home Depot. We're here today to ask you to affirm the building permit and to deny taking jurisdiction in this matter. After the civil arrests that occurred in 1992 in the city of Los Angeles, the city asked Home Depot to invest in economically impacted areas of the city, and we did that. asked Home Depot to invest in economically impacted areas of the city and we did that. Our jobs that come in the neighborhood of over 200 per store are good-paying, they’re above cities, livable wage, they come with full-time and part-time medical health benefits, domestic partner benefits, and many with education tuition for colleges paid as well. These are quality jobs and you should give the people that are sitting here today the opportunity to experience the economic benefit that this project could bring. Home Depot has gathered 3,000 support signatures in this community. It is not a one-sided affair. We have 60 businesses that would benefit from Home Depot opening on this Foothill Boulevard. Those people frequently could not speak out due to the climate, but they are there and we have submitted for public record this information. Home Depot urges the city council, and I urge the city council, to deny taking jurisdiction and to reaffirm the Area Planning Commission’s decision that the building permit is valid. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brendan Huffman.
Good morning, council members. My name is Kayvon Shakrin.
I call for Mr. Brendan Huffman.
Morning, council members. Brendan Huffman, CEO of VICA, the Valley Industry and Commerce Association. I’ll be brief and to answer Ms. Gruel’s question, I don’t know whether this is a project or not and apparently neither does the city. We have city agencies that are contradicting each other in their definition and interpretation. That is not just of concern to VICA’s members, it’s alarming that a permit approved by one agency could be appealed down the road and then taken up by the city council after the Area Planning Commission does a thorough review and analysis of whether this permit is appropriate and consistent with the plans for that area. In the interest of time, I’m going to stick to that and VICA urges the city council to stick to the original issuance of the permit by Building and Safety and the interpretation of the Area Planning Commission. Thank you.
And if there’s time, Mr. Shakirin after Vanessa Rodriguez.
Good morning, Honorable City Council. I’m here on behalf of the Los Angeles Area Chamber of Commerce and we echo VICA’s concerns. Thank you.
Mr. Kevin Shakirin.
Good morning, council members again. My name is Kayvon Shakrin. I’m a licensed civil engineer in the state of California and my practice has included many buildings similar to the nature of the one that we’re speaking of today. We have made an independent third-party review of the structural plans and documents relative to this action and find that under the definition of the Los Angeles Municipal Code, there are no, I repeat, there are no structural alterations. And this is consistent with the decision of the Los Angeles Building and Safety. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. And your name, madam?
Hi, my name is Sylvia Croitoro and I work at Home Depot in San Fernando.
Elaine, I’m sorry, ma’am, we don’t have a card for you. Can you hold the clock, please? Elaine Brown, who gave up time during public comment. Oh, the other side, all right, we’ll wait till this time runs out. Your name again, ma’am? All right. You have to come and fill a card out after you’re done, please.
Yes, I do have one, ma’am.
I think I read your name into the record on the other side. Are you speaking here in favor of Home Depot?
Yes, I’m in favor of Home Depot.
How do you spell your last name?
Croitoro, C-R-O-I-T-O-R-U.
Please go ahead and then please fill out a card afterwards, would you?
Okay.
We can’t locate your card. All right, you can start the clock again.
Thank you. My name is Sylvia Croitoro and I work at Home Depot in San Fernando. Please give our community a chance. Let Home Depot come here without any more problem. Kmart is gone, I miss it too, especially since I work in there full-time 13 years. Home Depot give a 52-year-old woman another chance at a full-time job when another businesses around here was only part-time available. Home Depot works with their employee. They give me a chance to pay my bills, I wanted to give them to a chance too. Let Home Depot in our community.
Okay, that is the end of the 10-minute hearing on both sides. Ms. Gruel, there is one individual, Ms. Brown, who I asked to give up her time during public comment.
I think she’s fine. Elaine, because, then we’ll give a minute to the other side if you want to speak, but right now you’ve all had your 10 minutes on this side, so you’re fine. Okay. 10, 10 minutes, all those.
We had 10 minutes on both sides, in favor and against, and I will read the names of the individuals who filled out cards on this item into the record. That would be Elaine Brown, Louise Stone, Kyle Barrick, and Mr. Michael Hunt. Ms. Gruel?
Thank you. Thank you very much. I will make it clear that you are against whatever you’d like to say, that’d be fine. Colleagues, I ask today that you support me on this 245 motion related to Home Depot. In the five years that I have been a city council member, I have rarely asked for a 245 on a planning issue. So this is clearly something I don’t take lightly. Now, almost six months ago, I appeared before a neighbored council in Sunland, Tuhanga, and they asked me, this was prior to the zoning administrator’s determination, this was prior to a lot of this discussion, they said to me, will you 245 this item if it doesn’t go our way? And I honestly said to them, I can’t assure that. I’m going to look at the facts. Some were not happy with that, but I said, I am going to look at what the zoning administrator says and make my determination based on the facts before me. And so today, I stand here very strongly knowing that the 30-some-odd-page document that was done by Gary Brewer and Gail Goldberg was a thoughtful and a very detailed review of whether or not this is a project or not. I just want to say a couple of things about what was comments here today, because I made it before. This is not about job creation today. As you know, I am one of the strongest business advocates on the city council. This is about whether it is a project or not. All of the other issues about bringing tax revenue, about it being about jobs, all of that are important issues. That’s not before us today. What’s before us today is do we have the control and the authority to determine whether or not the city of Los Angeles has the right to say, we’re going to address the issue of transportation traffic issues, we’re going to address environmental issues, it’s next to a school, we’re going to address the issues as to whether or not the hours of operation. All of that is reflected on whether or not it’s determined to be a project. And so, as you look at this issue, and so many questions were raised at the last public hearing in the planning commission, I ask for your vote so that we can have a hearing in front of this body, which will need to create a consistent legal record for the city of Los Angeles. There are many questions that need to be answered. How can the amount of structural construction, structural construction that has gone in the site not constitute a project under the specific plan? How could it could not be considered a structural alteration if you retrofit the roof and add 114, 114 new steel beams in the roof structure? If Home Depot ties the slab floor to the foundation and becomes a supporting structure, haven’t we crossed the threshold of structural alteration? But before we can hear the answers to all of those questions and discuss the merits of the case, we need to assert jurisdiction. People have asked, why does it matter if it’s a project or not? It’s been a very difficult thing to be able to explain to people why this, where this matters. Well, as a council member, each of us in this room have had to address the issue. If it’s deemed a project, it would be subject to environmental review, allowing the city to mitigate that traffic and other impacts generated in this community. It will also require the Home Depot to meet the guidelines in the specific plan that were put into place to create a higher quality of development along the Foothill corridor. Whether it is landscaping, signage, or hours of operation, it would have to comply with the specific plan. The director of planning, after reviewing all of the documentation of this case, came to conclusion that this was a project. Now, I have to tell you, I had no idea what the planning department was going to do. I told them to do what they thought was right, to review all of the facts, and they determined that in fact, the extent of the renovation is simply too complex and extensive to be considered a mere tenant improvement. The director of the planning department stated, “The reasonable conclusion that sufficient structural alterations have occurred for a project and is therefore subject to permit compliance review.” Now, there’s language here that defines what a project is and we can give you that code, but I believe very clearly that after the evidence presented, you will conclude that the new Home Depot construction is a project according to the specific plan. The three appeals in this case, due to the project’s technical nature, have gone back and forth. LA Department of Building Safety initially rejected the community’s appeal on the ground that the work was not a project. In the second appeal, the director of planning decision concluded that the extensive remodeling was a project. Building and Safety stated at the planning commission last week that it was a project. Now, you have to know that when Home Depot came in and put in their first application, they had all kinds of changes they wanted to make. And they actually had to pull things back because it was constituted a project in the first review and they went back and forth. If Home Depot had followed the rules initially and been deemed a project two years ago, they would be open today. So this is not the fault of the city of Los Angeles because they chose this path. Now, you know, in last week, the vote was 3 to 2 in the Area Planning Commission. We should all be concerned about the record, state of the record in this case, and I have a great respect for the planning commission, but I fear that the discussion and the unclear findings that accompanied their North Valley Area Planning Commission in this case, particularly in great light of the detail and clarity in the director’s action over 30 pages, could leave the city in a vulnerable position. Because of these inconsistent verbal findings, I believe the only prudent action for this body is to hear the item before us and render a decision that will both clarify, create clarity for both building and safety and planning on interpreting the local specific plan. Now, there have been a couple of issues raised, rather or not, this using the building and safety permit review process. That exists in the city of Los Angeles. It exists, that you can appeal it in the city of Los Angeles. That’s not something I created, that is something that has been here for a long time. Of course, we don’t want every building permit in the city of Los Angeles to be challenged, but this is an environmental issue in this community and how it is impacted and the kinds of decisions that we need to make as elected officials. And again, there’s enough confusion that I believe it is critical that we do this. I ask for your vote today supporting the 245 and let our body hear all of the evidence and make a decision based on the question, is it a project or not? You heard today from a lot of the speakers on the Home Depot side about a lot of other things. That is not our job today. Our job is, is it a project or not? And as someone in this council who I feel has demonstrated my credentials on the business side, demonstrated my credentials on doing what is fair, demonstrated my credentials on the fact that a 245, asking for a 245 is a big thing for me today. So I would hope that you would support me and have a yes vote on this item so it can go to the Planning and Land Use Committee next week and then come back to the full council for us to clearly identify that this is a project, require the issues to be addressed in the community, and to support, I think, the community and support the city in the decisions that they made that our zoning administrator and our building and safety department indicated in their report last week before the city council. We do have representatives from the city attorney’s office and the planning department here today who have, who know this backwards and forwards. And colleagues, this is not, and I will end, this is not a popularity contest of how many people we can get here or out in the different places. This is about what is the right thing to do and what is fair. And so I ask you today to support me on the 245, that we can assert jurisdiction.
Thank you, Ms. Gruel. Our next speaker will be, please, so we can proceed with the meeting, Mr. Zine is our next speaker.
Thank you, Madam President. Mr. Grand, city attorney, can you come to the table, please? Home Depot has three facilities in my district. I have one with a day labor problem, I have one with no problem, and I have one with a day labor center. I don’t have a problem with Home Depot carrying on business in the community. My focus is on what is good for Sunland, Tuhanga. And I’m familiar with the old Kmart site. When I was with the LAPD, I worked that area and I’m very familiar with that community. I’m familiar with the old Kmart, familiar with the site, which would accommodate a large store, whether it be a Home Depot, a Lowe’s, or a Target, or whatever be placed up at that community. My focus on it is reality of what we as a council do legally and what the city of Los Angeles does legally. I understand from Councilmember Gruel’s comments is that Home Depot came in with the initial, some modernization, some revitalization of the facility. And I know the change orders take place. And as it went up the ladder, and that’s my question to you, Michael, did it go from a remodel facility that was already built to modernize it to get it in operation, or did it go, as what we’re hearing, a project? And I know that there’s a distinction between the modernization and the project. And then the city attorney, if you can respond to the legal issues that we face from Home Depot and the attorneys representing Home Depot. I am pro-business, along with Councilmember Gruel, and this council is pro-business. We don’t want to stifle business in the city of LA. We don’t want to step on neighborhoods and we support neighborhood councils. And when 700 people can come out in the community, that tells me that community is involved and I respect that. So we’re right on that line, we walk on that line. We don’t want to alienate business, we don’t want to alienate the community, we want to walk that line. And the councilmember Gruel has a responsibility for her community, to stand up for her community and not destroy business. So putting that whole package together is where we’re at. And I’m sure my colleagues share the same concerns I have. We don’t want to go against a colleague, we don’t want to go against something that’s legal, we don’t want to go against the community, we don’t want to go against business. So we got a big pot here, it’s like the buffet. Which one do we pick and which one do we select that’s right? We go with Home Depot, we alienate the community? Go with the community, we alienate Home Depot? How do we make this work in the legal perspective? And both of you can answer those multiple questions. Michael first, please.
Michael O’Grand, Department of City Planning, chief zoning administrator. In response to, there were changes on the project early on. There were exterior alterations and modifications that were taken off the table and off the plans that were reviewed by staff originally. Department of Building and Safety issued the permits that this, and by issuing the building permits as a by-rite project, determined this project was, basically was not a project under the specific plan.
So you said initially it was by-rite, which means they do it, which is getting a permit with no other traffic study or EAR or anything else?
There were some early communications from staff that it was going to be subject to be a project and then some of those elements that that was based off were taken away.
So the project proposal, they removed, Home Depot removed that, to remove that from the project concept?
They removed some of those elements that staff had looked at originally at a first take on this project. Subsequently, that was appealed and that’s where the zoning administrator in 1226K of the code looks at, did Building and Safety err in issuing those building permits? And that’s the legislative process that we go through. On behalf of the director of planning, our associate zoning administrator determined that it actually was a project with all the data and the evidence that was submitted that the plan checker had, some of which that also was presented to Building and Safety, was presented to the planning department, but in much more depth and investigation, our zoning administrator determined that it actually was a project, which doesn’t mean no Home Depot. It means you have to go through the process for a specific plan review and environmental clearance.
So that would mean a traffic study and an EAR?
Not necessarily an EAR. That would depend upon if there’s a condition that can’t be mitigated to extent of insignificance. It could be possible that this project would not require an EAR. It’s really too early to tell since they haven’t submitted any environmental documents, but it would require mitigation for any impacts that are potentially significant. It would also require review of the specific plan and conformance with the specific plan. It would also require review of the specific plan and conformance with the specific plan, or they have to ask for exceptions or adjustments from that plan to comply.
So that wasn't done?
No.
So was it a basic bait and switch? We ask for this, and then we do that? Or we ask for that and do this? I'm just trying to pull the cards out of the table.
Yeah, I don't feel there was anything intentional. This has a long history. I think both sides were trying to find a way to have a fair process, but it's a very complicated issue that we're looking at, multiple levels of multiple agencies. And I think the extent of the renovation and the definition of the plan and trying to put clarity to that, I don't think there was any inherent intent to not go through the process, but it did look like, as the project grew and as the project was further analyzed at higher levels of staff, that's where the determinations have come out.
And from the City Attorney, the legal issues, the legal liability for the city, if we were to say no and go back to the drawing board, et cetera, some of the comments that have already been made?
Jerry Burge, City Attorney's Office, Land Use Division. You did receive a threat of litigation yesterday in a communication from Latham &amp; Watkins representing Home Depot. In that communication, they assert that they believe there's a Tort Claims Act lawsuit that could be raised against the city. I'm very unclear what that could be. The city has many immunities to a tort claims action. However, there is always the potential for a petition for writ of mandate against the city challenging this action and the findings and the evidence supporting those findings. We view this decision here today really as a policy question for you. Do you want to be the final decision makers as to what a project is? You adopted the specific plan as a legislative act, and you can determine whether or not you want to decide what a project is and whether this meets the definition of project. You could equally decide that you believe the Area Planning Commission should be the final decision maker in this case. We will work with you, your staff, Planning Department's staff, if you do assert jurisdiction, to make sure the findings are adequate for litigation. Equally, if you refuse to assert jurisdiction, decide not to assert jurisdiction, the Area Planning Commission decision has not come out yet, and we will work with staff to make sure that the findings are, in our mind, sufficient to withstand judicial scrutiny.
From what you've heard so far, Mr. Legrand, from Councilmember Grul, do you see where it could be a clouded, questionable issue?
Again, that's really for you to decide whether or not...
I'm asking you as an attorney.
I think it could go either way.
Either way, to support the 245 or go against the 245? So like I said, it's right down the center?
No, 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 the merits, the merits. As to supporting 245, that's a complete, again, that's a policy question. Do you want to assert jurisdiction to review it? I do not believe that you have to assert jurisdiction to help any legal cause of action. It's a policy question.
We don't have to assert a 245 to have any what?
To decide whether or not you think, you want to look at project. Do you want to look at whether or not this is a project, or whether or not you want to let the Area Planning Commission decide that? I think we could defend any, either action.
Okay. I have some more follow-up questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Zein. Our next speaker will be Mr. Alarcon.
I'm the new kid on the block, again. And so I've never done a 245. My, my personal view is that if one of my colleagues wants a 245 something, then I'm going to lean very heavily toward their discretion. It's their district, and I let them judge. But on the merits of this particular issue, it seems to be much broader than this particular site. To take jurisdiction is one thing, but to determine that this is not a project, whether or not it is a project, could have far-reaching effects. My understanding is that the specific concerns are additional fencing around a proposed garden center, some structural beams to uphold some additional air conditioning that were used to determine that this, or they're making the case that this is a project. Now, if we were to, if we were to determine that, in fact, it was a project, would we then be creating a precedent for all future businesses that might want to upgrade their air conditioning and put structural beams in? And therefore, would we be subject to further potential litigation if, if, if a Kmart on the other side of town wanted to upgrade in this particular fashion? It seems to me that we want them to put new air conditioning, we want them to put, please, I'm not there yet. It seems to me we want upgrades in buildings, particularly where it involves energy efficiency. And if we were to decide that this were a project, it may very well discourage future projects where we want them to be more efficient, but they don't want to because they don't want to be determined to be a project, but they might get challenged by the community and then brought into City Council and sued eventually if we were to make a decision that is contrary to the decision that we might render here to support that, in fact, this is a project. Does that seem to be a logical concern?
Councilman Mike Legrand, Department of City Planning. It's a very logical concern and a good question. In terms of the issue of a project, different specific plans define project in many different ways. So this is really a localized issue for Sunland Tahunga. This specific plan has a certain definition of project. These very detailed plans are what we looked at to see if this was a project, so that it wouldn't match any other case. I don't feel it set any type of precedent. The other cases outside this specific plan area, for example, in your district, or perhaps on another side of town, would be viewed any differently because of any action you take. Basically, this is specific to this specific plan, the interpretation of that plan against very detailed and thorough plans and a project description that's paragraphs-long from this Home Depot site.
Actually, I'd like to hear from the attorney on that one.
Jerry Burge, City Attorney's Office. I agree with what the City Planning is stating. It is unique to this site. It is a very fact-intensive decision about whether or not this particular site meets the definition of a project in that specific plan. However, of course, once the City Council makes the decision that this is a project, Building and Safety and Planning will look at all future developments in that area with that decision in mind.
Okay, colleagues, I rise to say that this is not a Sunland Tahunga issue. This is a citywide issue, and the ramifications of our decision could very well impact decisions that, that need to be made well into the future in various parts of the city. I have no problem with the 245. I'll vote for the 245 as a member protocol, quite frankly. But, but I think that as it goes through the hearing process, as it goes through the review and Plum Committee, and then comes back to us, I think we have to, we can't just use protocol here. We have to think about this in terms of what is in the best interest of the city relative to future planning that may occur and the precedence that we may set in rendering a decision here.
Thank you, Mr. Alarcon. Mr. Labonde is our next speaker.
Thank you very much. Good morning to all, and it's nice to see you. Thank you very much, Bill. It's good to be back. I've received a lot of correspondence about this from the people of Sunland Tahunga, and I appreciate that because I love when people have passion about their neighborhoods. And every dynamic in Los Angeles is changing quite rapidly. Would you agree?
Yes.
How long have you been with the Planning Department?
Ten years.
Ten years. So in your ten years, what have you seen in cases like this?
Many changes, much more involvement and consideration for design, sustainability.
Sustainability. And how long was the building there as a Kmart there before, and what year was it first built?
I don't have that information readily available. My assumption, I want to say it was, thank you, the community's telling me 77, they're much more familiar with the site.
Right. So you know how people see things being changed on this. What type of extra environmental view will help Sunland Tahunga on this?
Well, if this is determined to be a project, after the 245 process is carried through, there would be an environmental assessment form in which we'd trigger a traffic study, as well as we'd look at air quality. We'd look at many issues in terms of aesthetics, all those issues that we have the benefit of an environmental document, there'd be a public comment on that document.
Now, there's no one sitting next to you, but if they were, could they tell me how many hardware stores are on Foothill Boulevard or in that region of the city? Because sometimes people are concerned about these type of stores because they eat up smaller stores.
Yeah, that wasn't something that we looked at in coming up with this determination.
But pretend someone's next to you. And what would you think they'd say? Would that, is that a factor that we look at? Because I think that's sometimes, what I read, if anybody wrote me, and I got several handwritten letters, so you have good penmanship, Sunland Tahunga, stand up, stand up if you wrote me a letter, forgive me for not recalling your name. So a lot of people wrote letters who are very passionate when they put their hand to a piece of paper that says that. And I understand, and I'm an old Northern Leaguer, when Verdugo Hills was in the Northern League, now they're in the East Valley League, but Marshall and Verdugo, and you go up there, and there was no freeway. And I remember when the freeway came through, and I remember the, there's a little reservoir up there for you, and all the power in Los Angeles controlled right there in the neighborhood. Do you know that? Not many people know all that power in that little building up there off the road there. Anyway, I think the councilwoman of the district is asking for a legitimate request to go through this process, but it may not reach your ultimate goal. You've got to understand that because there's a lot of forces in this. It is a building, you live next to an interstate highway, there's a lot of arguments for it, but I think the extra review will help make the guidance and make up for what, who's not sitting next to you. You know, give that type of extra review, because I think it's important to look at it that way. This is a passion, they're passionate on the, on the marketing of home improvement, which is real important. I can understand that. And I go to Home Depot, but I go to Ballard Hardware and Hyperion more often than I go to Home Depot. But I do go to Home Depot sometimes, and that's just how we work in this particular lifestyle. But it's, it's a changing dynamic is that we live in. So I'm going to support the 245, but I do know, though, because I have 245, if I have 245, anything, Mr. City Attorney or Madam Clerk?
I believe you have.
You know, I think I didn't get the votes for it. I think what I wanted last time, I think if I remember right, I didn't have the same, same thing there. So regardless of what happens here, I believe in the extra review for a project such as this may give some guidance. But ultimately, because there was a Kmart there, ultimately because you live next to a state interstate, ultimately there may be something there, but it could give you a little something extra that they may be happy to build because they would like to be in your neighborhood and do business like they do in my neighborhood now. So let's proceed. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Labonde. Our next speaker is Mr. Rosendahl.
Thank you, Madam President. And again, welcome back from Germany, Tom. It's good to see you. We missed you. How big of a deal is it to do this whole review that needs to be done, and how much time are we talking about?
Jerry Burge, you have to act within 21 days of asserting jurisdiction.
So we assume, assume we do that, or hypothetically at this point, as we haven't voted, how long of a process is it to review the whole plans, take a deep breath, do the environmental impact, do all of the cumulative effects? You know, Ms. Grul and I were standing at an event yesterday talking about cumulative effects. It all starts adding up as to its impact on our community. And I might also say, I have a Home Depot on Jefferson. It's probably the most successful Home Depot in California, if not America. And my constituents use that Home Depot for remodeling their homes, and there's all kinds of people involved in it. So I'm a big believer in people being able to improve their homes and make things happen. And Home Depot does provide a service for us all. But its impact on the community is key to all of us, obviously. What's the timeframe if we were to go forward with this?
Mike Legrand, Department of City Planning. The difficulty in answering that question is, without knowing what level of environmental review will be required, because we don't know what impacts they potentially may have, it can go anywhere from four months to a year. So it really would depend upon what level of environmental analysis needs to be done. If you had a full EIR, we're looking at a year. If it was some level of mitigation less than an EIR that was able to be done, and again, we don't have those facts in front of us, that would be a matter of months compared to a year.
When will you be able to make that determination?
If this Prop 245 went over and the APC action was overturned and Home Depot filed for their applications, that determination can be made within a matter of probably 30 days from the time they submit their applications.
So what's the big deal? You know, what's wrong with the community having a voice in a process every step of the way, transparent and open and engaged? I mean, if I could ask Home Depot to come up and explain to me, from a business standpoint, what's the big deal in front of that Michael?
Mr. Rosendahl, they, they've had their time to speak. Yes, they have. And if we do...
They've spoken? Okay.
Yeah, they've already spoken.
They've already made their points.
All right, so if you can direct your questions to the staff of the city.
Well, from your perspective, it's four months to a year would be the analysis of it.
Correct.
And that would give us a comfortable feeling of how it might fit in within the community or not fit in.
You would have mitigation, there would also be a review of the design of the building, the facade, how it'll fit in with the specific plan.
Yeah, well, we work for the people, so I'm obviously going to support Ms. Grul on this motion. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Ms. Hahn. Ms. Hahn?
Thank you, Madam President. Well, I just rise to also indicate my support for Councilmember Grul in her bid to assert jurisdiction on this matter. And I will tell you, you know, things have changed. You know, things have changed. In the old days, you know, before our new city charter and before the creation of neighborhood councils and area planning commissions, in the old days, this would have happened, and the community would not have been part of the process. They would have sort of learned about it after the fact. So we do have a completely different process today than, than we did many years ago. But still, the process is something that this council member was supported above, but has found some issues that deserve relooking at. And I will tell you, you may not think that it matters, but, you know, all these letters that I got, I've actually, I've, I've actually looked at every one of them and have read them. And I'll tell you, my favorite one is, Councilmember, "Pinch me, Fabio, because I can't believe it's not butter. There is nothing as dear to a constituent's heart than waking up one morning and finding one is actually represented." So, and I think that's right. I think Wendy has done something that is, as she indicated, is not usual for her. She takes it very seriously. She has not supported 245s before. She certainly does have her credentials as someone who is business-friendly, but I think she laid it out very well to the rest of us. This is not about whether or not there is a Home Depot there. It is not about whether or not there are jobs. It is not whether or not we're allowing a business like this to help homeowners improve their home. That's not what's before us today. What's before us today is, as she said, whether or not we actually believe that it is a project. And if it is a project, then certain things need to happen. And I will tell you, I have something brewing in my district that is, is the kind of project that gives people angst because it is about traffic. It is about the impact that these projects have on our neighborhood. And our quality of life is so fragile and so precious that at a moment like this, I think we have to take the opportunity to not say whether or not it will ever go there, but in fact, it should go through the process to tell the truth. Tell the truth about your project, and then mitigate the impacts that that project will have on a neighborhood. I think that's all we're asking. I think that's fair, and I think Councilmember Grul's constituents are lucky to have her standing up for them today.
Thank you very much, Ms. Hahn. Our next speaker for the second time will be Ms. Grul.
I know. I know, that's hard to follow. So, thank you, Ms. Hahn. Just, you know, to reiterate, my point is that what is before us is to assert jurisdiction, to answer some of the questions that have been raised today by both sides, and to be able to do that before the Planning and Land Use Committee. Mr. Reyes is not here today. He seconded the motion, supported 245-ing this item and having it go before Plum. But this is about Sunland Tahunga, about the specific plan. There are not specific plans all across the city. In fact, there are how many, Mr. Legrand? Do you, I'm testing you today, aren't I?
Yes, yes, I want to say we have proximal, we have 35 community plans, and out of that, I want to say there's about 20, 15 specific plans.
Specific plans, and some of those are within, in those community plans. These specific plans are specific to the neighborhood and the community, and were adopted by the city to put either restrictions or additions, whatever it may be, to address issues in their neighborhood and concerns. And so this is about our ability to control our destiny and to be able to look at ways in which we can mitigate the issues. But more importantly, it's about setting the record straight for the City of Los Angeles to protect the city on this issue. Because as Mr. Zein raised the issue, either side is, you know, could potentially challenge our decision, and we have to be very careful in what we do and the actions that we take. And so, colleagues, I ask you to, to support this 245, support the, the process that was developed through the specific plan, and support the, I think, the... developed through the specific plan, and support the, I think the review that is necessary to ensure that the community is represented, and that we do what's right for the city and what is fair. So please ask for your vote today, a yes on this 245. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Gruel. There are no further speakers in the queue, so, Mr. Clerk, if you would please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
Thank you very much. Mr. Clerk, our next item.
Item 34, called special by Councilmember Rosendahl.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you. Which item was that, sir?
And, and just, just for clarification, the matter will be referred to Planning and Land Use Management Committee August 7th, and then will be in council on or before August 17th.
And Ms. Gruel, I believe, I think I heard you-
To go forthwith, to do this, or does it need to go forthwith? It does not, okay.
All right, it's not necessary to go forthwith. All right, thank you very much, Mr. City Attorney. Our next item, Mr. Clerk?
Item 34, called special by Councilmember Rosendahl.
Mr. Rosendahl.
United, we're all united.
I'm, I'm sorry, just for the record, the City Attorney has recommended that we send item 34 forthwith. And again, I believe we're on item 34, Mr. Rosendahl?
Thank you, Madam President. Item 34 talks about United Airlines having a route between LAX and Shanghai. United Airlines has to get its proposal in in a couple of days to be considered for Los Angeles. There are four other cities, Chicago, Dallas, and Seattle, that are also looking at it. And I strongly want us to be in the play for this, but there are a couple of issues, Madam President, that I want to make sure my colleagues understand. First of all, when we speak regionalism, we're talking about a real direct flight to Ontario as well as to the LAX place. Ontario makes sense because the inland empire has a substantial amount of Chinese Americans that don't need to drive all across the gridlock region to LAX, but could do a nonstop direct flight out of Ontario to Shanghai. So we're urging United, as they go forward, if LA United route gets accepted, to have those flights come to Ontario. We, as a city, can prepare two contact gates at Ontario for A380s. Takes us about a year to make one of those contact gates, and if United is awarded a contract between Los Angeles and Beijing, or Los Angeles and Shanghai, wherever with mainland China, we should be thinking of Ontario as well as LAX. And we want United to appreciate that in their marketing plans going forward, that the inland empire, where there is a substantial community, is under consideration for nonstop direct flights. The second issue has to do with the notion of their workers. There are 30 janitors right now that their jobs are somewhat concerned as they go through an RFP process. I'm told by United that their HR office automatically goes through this process. But we want to urge United to stay close to the living wage and to the contracts with union employees, because those union employees do get the kind of healthcare support and the basic salary to be effective in their job. And we want United, we want to send them a strong message that the worker matters to us, and the unionization, which they're now union, must continue within that mix. And there are other issues that I've talked to United about, like the Green Line into LAX, and to be strong with me on no expansion of LAX, no northern runway movement unless it is a safety issue. And I think we, as a group, should be excited about a direct hook between Beijing, Shanghai, and LA, and we should approve this, but with that appreciation of those issues that I just outlined. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Rosendahl. Ms. Hahn is our next speaker.
Thank you, Madam President. I certainly agree, Councilmember Rosendahl, with what you said. However, I would like to move that we continue this one day, because I think if we want to send a strong message to United Airlines, that we are serious about them not contracting out non-union jobs for their janitors. The only way we can send them a serious message is to delay this one day. I've been told that they're willing to speak with me today, to discuss this matter. We have till Thursday to approve this resolution, but I think if we hold it up one day, take it up tomorrow, we will be able, and anybody can do it if they want, have discussions with United Airlines. Because I already sent a letter to Secretary of Transportation supporting this idea of a direct flight from Los Angeles to Shanghai. I agree that it, there are other airports that are poised to take this direct flight, and I think LAX should be that destination. But I will tell you, let me tell you what this daily flight from LA to Shanghai would mean to our economy. It's $156 million in wages, about 3,000 direct and indirect jobs, mostly in the high-wage manufacturing arena. It's an estimated 4,000 tons of cargo imports and 2,000 tons of cargo exports. So it is a moneymaker. But this is where the lowly janitor, you know, is in, in jeopardy of losing their, their decent wages that gives them respect and dignity. You know, this is a multimillion dollar project, Shanghai, Los Angeles to Shanghai. Let's not leave behind those that we do care about in this city, and we have always stood up tall for our, our workers who, who, who clean the terminal and who, who make it a pleasant place for the passengers. They're going to make money on this. Let's not, in one fell swoop, allow this to be a moneymaker and yet, the, the working person to lose their dignity and respect through this. So I say if we continue this one day, then it's a stronger message, and because we may not support it tomorrow, if we don't get the kind of, of message from United, that they will abandon this idea of contracting out for non-union jobs. So colleagues, if you'll agree with me to hold it one day, then let's have some conversations with the United folks.
Mr. Hallercon.
I'm happy to second Ms. Hahn's motion to continue this matter one day. If we are going to send the proper message of economic development, it has to, the message of economic development has to reach all the people of Los Angeles, not just corporate America. In this case, United Airlines is not playing right with the janitors. We have a longstanding policy of operating our airport with good quality of life standards relative to wages, and with regard to the janitors, they are being held in abance of that kind of standard. So, of course, it's very difficult to stop the, the notion of expanding our, our service to Shanghai and, and using this opportunity to do so. At the same time, I think we need, we do need to send a message to United that we want them to, to share in their profits in a way that benefits the quality of life for those who are the least of the totem pole in the hierarchy of the United Airlines administration. Those are the people that live in Los Angeles, and those are the people that we should be most concerned about, not the, the corporate moguls at United Airlines, but the people who are working on the ground, making our flight a little more comfortable, our weight in the airport a little more comfortable. And so I, I urge you to also join with Ms. Hahn to, to continue this matter one day, to send a message to United that maybe we can't stop this one, but we will heed this message in the future relative to other things that United might be considering doing.
Mr. Labange?
I support the one-day continuance, I have a question. Is anyone here for the Airport Department? Because you want the plane to go to Ontario? Is that a question? I mean, no one's here for the Airport Department?
You want me to respond to that?
Yeah, if that's okay with me.
First of all, I'm going to, obviously, support a one-day continuance, it's a no-brainer for me, but the point is, we don't want everything shoved into LAX.
But here's the problem, we should have a discussion on that, if that's what you're saying, Ontario, because the problem is not LAX. The question that always amazes me, Bill, is they say 77 million people go to LAX, is that true?
It's 64 million.
64 million, but 52 million stay there at LAX, they get on another plane and go someplace else.
Correct.
So, the fact that you send it to Ontario doesn't help the people who are coming because they make connections here. So there's a question there that if someone from the Air Department could come down tomorrow, maybe they could answer that. I understand you're talking about regionalism, but also, having just experienced the airport, and thank you for your welcome back, I don't know if you want to still welcome me back, I do have a question on how we look at that issue. And the next question, we're just going to ask our City Attorney since we're going to continue this for the day. The question that Ms. Hahn asked, just want to know the formalities there. Is it an issue that she has with, as it relates to not this line, but for how they're treating some alleged contract workers, is that, what's the, what's the, have you been listening, Mr. City Attorney? I don't want to get you in trouble.
No, I've been listening, Mr. Labange, and there's always concern if the city council ventures into any kind of labor disputes, so we'd appreciate being able to discuss this matter between today and tomorrow with Councilwoman Hahn.
Yeah, so the best thing for me is Ms. Hahn to be our representative and work with him and see what happens, but it may, it may not be our, what our basis of our vote is yesterday, or tomorrow, or whatever the next day comes. Thank you. I ask, as Ms. Hahn did, for a continuance.
Thank you, Mr. Labange, Mr. Rosendahl, and then Ms. Hahn will be after Mr. Rosendahl.
Yeah, I just wanted to comment, of course, we continued the item last week when it was on consent, to just pull it out of the dark and put it in the light so we could have this discussion last week and today. And I certainly support one more day extension. But Mr. Labange, we couldn't get Lawa to come here today, they were too busy somewhere else, and I'm not too pleased by that. And we, we need to have Lawa here when we talk about the long-range regionalism. We do know the inland empire has a substantial Chinese-American community that would appreciate them being respected and not making everybody traverse the gridlock Southland. There can be nonstop direct too there with passengers back and forth. They need to do marketing studies to figure that out, Mr. Labange, but we want to encourage them, as they go forward, to not just think of LAX. We're 18 million people in this region, and I've had enough of LAX expansion. We need to regionalize our airlines and go forward with that in a very positive way. But I do support Ms. Hahn's motion, so.
Thank you very much. Ms. Hahn?
Thank you. And I, I think what Councilmember Rosendahl is doing in the context of this historic opportunity to have a direct flight from LA to Shanghai, is he is saying, let's prepare for the future, because the future is now. And the A380s, folks, are here, they're coming. What we need to do, we were, we were told that an A380 gate took nine months from beginning to end. We need to be constructing at least two of those gates at Ontario right now, so we can prepare for the day when we have A380s to come to Ontario. I think we've been so short-sighted in the fact that we're not even prepared to be, to embrace regionalism. To embrace regionalism is not just talking about, we have to build the gates. Also, if that plane was ever diverted from, if any A380 was ever diverted from LAX for a security reason, for a weather reason, we have no other airport that would be able to accommodate the, the embarking and disembarking of an A380. So you're a visionary, and, and I think in the context of what we're doing today, we can talk about union issues, and we can talk about the idea of embracing regionalism so that we can share the benefits of air traffic and the burdens of air traffic with the entire region.
Thank you, Ms. Hahn. Our next speaker for the first time is Mr. Smith, followed by Mr. Labange.
Thank you, members. I have no problem with delaying one day. I, I think it's unfortunately unnecessary because the whole concept is, does the city of LA want this or not? Is it beneficial, Los Angeles, or not? We are the central point for trade and commerce to the east. China is the largest trading partner of America now. We need to be paying attention to that. What Mr. Rosendahl suggested is that Ontario needs to be a part of that. I have no problem. In fact, I embrace that, and I suggested to Bill just now, maybe as a council, we should pass a separate resolution asking United Airlines to shift one or two flights a week to Ontario to start with, and build that trade up out of that airport as well. And maybe, good luck someday, Palmdale, who knows? But the point is that we need to look at that issue. To delay it today, I think is unnecessary because we need to make a very strong statement. LA understands its role in the world economy as the major funnel point for trade and commerce with the east, and we need to go forward with that. If you want a day to discuss other issues, that's fine, or we can take action separate to this for those other issues you have with the unions or Ontario, that's totally appropriate. I wish we had just approved this today and move on. I'll go along with it one day so you can get your issues resolved, but I think we need to take what Mr. Rosendahl suggested to heart and come back with a policy that either we all sign a letter, or we pass a resolution as a council, asking United to consider in this plan, Ontario at least as a one, two-day-a-week trial to see if they can build that market up. So with that, I'll go along with it one day, and I thank Mr. Rosendahl for those ideas and that vision. We need to embrace that, and I hope we'll all support him in that.
Thank you very much. Mr. Labange for the second time?
Madam Clerk, could you invite someone from the Airport Department to come, or Mr. Clerk, tomorrow, so they could discuss this?
We can let airports know.
No, no, just invite them and say that, they're, for some reason, they didn't come, and I, I think they're, you know, and, and I think we have a lot to learn, and I'm, I'm, you talk about vision, Janice, we all have vision. And, and the vision is the practicality of how an airport operates right now and what they're doing. I'm sure United Airlines and other airlines study this stuff faster, Mr. Rosendahl, than we do. Airlines study this faster, and they look at people, and they look at how they could move them to another plane. When I met with the people in Mexico and Mexicana Airlines, they spoke of their United and alliance partners, and how they move people around the world through our facility. So we have to work and balance it out. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Labange. We have one speaker card, Mr. Matthew Dowd.
Thank you, yes, Matt Dowd. For all the Channel 35 people, I've got to tell you that since there's now a political speech zone, they're talking about making of Venice, I have to keep up my political activism, which means I have to weigh in on these issues which involve the district that I reside in. But what I don't understand is, we had a big Home Depot thing, and they had some very valid issues, but everything, everyone voted along protocol. It's like, no, well, I'll, if it's good enough, so why isn't it good enough to vote with Mr. Smith today? Why are we having these continuances? I think he's getting ripped off. Let's just put this one through, it's a no-brainer, isn't it? You know, I think the A380s are a mistake too, because he raised a very valid point. If there is a security issue, a terrorist issue with those planes, and they come from China, so we're just trusting China to make sure, you know, good people only are on those planes, and then they can't land at LAX, where, where do you put it? I mean, is Edwards Air Force Base, they land the space shuttle there, I don't know if you can put an A380 down there, but then you've got the gate issue. So I was against those from the very beginning, but I guess the mayor wants to move ahead, another harebrained scheme from that guy, but it's in my district, LAX, it's an important one, I've got to keep up my political speech. I want to say hi to all the students, everyone, this is how it works at City Hall, you come down for public comment, be a political activist, the city invited you.
Thank you very much, sir, you're off topic now, this is not public comment, so if you don't want to comment on the item before us-
Okay, well, let me, let me mention one more time that I don't understand why everyone votes with the protocol on an important issue, and in a simple resolution like this, we got to play around.
Thank you very much. We have another speaker card from Brian Rudiger, and then Mr. Rosendahl.
Really quickly, my name's Brian Rudiger, I'm the Airport Director for Service Employees International Union, we represent many of the employees that work throughout LAX, contracted by the airlines. I just want to speak really quickly to the point about the quality of the jobs, because I think it is an issue, it's actually an issue that I think United Airlines rightfully raised, and the issue, and that was cited, I believe, by Councilmember Hahn about the amount, the impact on the economy, the impact of high-quality jobs. So I think that that was right for United to raise those issues in requesting this resolution, and we support that, and we think that in raising the issue of equality of jobs, we need to be looking at all levels of jobs, the equality of jobs that are provided for high-scale, but also for folks that are often among the lowest income of our, of our city. So, we appreciate the motion to continue for one day, we hope that United, United in the past has been a very responsible player, and we would like nothing more than to support United Airlines and support the city in expanding the service, because we think that more jobs for the city, as long as they are good quality jobs that provide healthcare, are really what the city needs. So we thank you for your consideration.
Thank you very much, sir, and this closes the public hearing at this time. And this closes the public hearing at this time. Mr. Rosendahl, you're in the queue.
Just about five seconds, Madam President. I want to thank Mr. Smith for his last comments there about a motion. We're going to put a motion in tomorrow, Mr. Smith and I, talking about encouraging at United to look at Ontario and the A380 gates as part of the process. And I look forward to continuing it one more day so that we can get that kind of activity going. And thank you, Ms. Hahn, for your leadership.
Thank you very much. There are no further speakers in the queue. Mr. Clerk, just for clarification, we are voting for a one-day continuance?
It can be without objection for a one-day continuance.
Okay, without objection, that'll be the order. Okay? All right, so we, next item.
Madam President, there are 12 members. Would you like to reconsider the ordinances from today?
Yes.
Those are items 1, 4, 5, 6, 32, and 33.
Okay, without objection. Stop. Next item? Have to open the roll, okay. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
All right, now we will be voting on the ordinances. Yeah, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Next item?
That does leave just the closed session item.
All right, if I can ask that the chambers be cleared so that we can go into closed session? Great. All right, so if you can assist us in closing, clearing the chambers so we can please go into closed session.[707.70]
Good afternoon, we are back in City Council. I'd like to acknowledge our city attorney for clarification of the action we took in executive session.
Thank you, Madam President. And after I recite the settlement, the council will be voting on this also. The proposed settlement is the city agrees to release Burrito King's proposal bond and performance deposit. City agrees to pay Burrito King ninety-five thousand five hundred dollars for value of the fixtures. City agrees to authorize approximately forty thousand dollars in unpaid rental amortized over, amortized by Burrito King for equipment purchases. Burrito King agrees to vacate the premises by August ninth, two thousand and seven. Burrito King agrees to pay the department for rent for June and July, two thousand and seven. And Burrito King to voluntarily waive its right to bid or propose on the city contract for three years from the date of the settlement.
Thank you. Do we need to vote on that in public session? Okay, Madam Clerk, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
Twelve ayes.
Thank you, that's items been approved. Fourth with, please. Next items.
Council has motions for posting or referral.
Those will be posted and referred.
The desk is clear.
Thank you. Do we have announcements today, colleagues? Yes, Mr. Labanche.
Just returned from London and Berlin. I represented us in Berlin, our sister city, for the Volkfest where they had a very nice program sponsored in part by our mission in Europe to encourage tourism. And it was very good to see the positive feeling towards Los Angeles.
Thank you. Any other announcements? Yes, Mr. Parks.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have two announcements. One, our Greater Los Angeles African American Chambers having their summer mixer and also membership drive on August the second, six to eight thirty P.M., Thursday at the Marriott Downtown Hotel at three thirty-three South Fig. And also, St. Andrews Park is announcing their annual jazz festival. And that's at eighty-seven oh one South St. Andrews on Saturday, August the fourth.
Thank you. Any other announcements? If not, I know we have adjourning motions. If everyone could please rise. Colleagues, I know Mr. Zine is going to, two of the officers that passed away. I do want to add an adjourning motion for June Bratton. June Bratton is the mother of Los Angeles Police Chief William Bratton who passed away on June twenty-ninth, two thousand, excuse me, July twenty-ninth, two thousand and seven. Mrs. Bratton was a resident of Boston. She was married to her husband, William E. Bratton, for over six decades. She will be deeply missed by all of her family and friends. I know that Chief Bratton had been frequently going back to visit her because she had been ill for the last couple of years, and we send our condolences. She is survived by her husband, William E. Bratton, son, Los Angeles Chief, William F. Bratton, and his wife, Ricky Kleinman. Her daughter, Patricia Bratton, her grandsons, David P. Bratton and Kyle Bratton, ostrich, ostrich. And so we do send our love and condolences to Chief Bratton and his entire family for the loss of his mother. Mr. Alakon.
Members, obviously, I'm going to defer to Mr. Zine on Detective George Salee. But I do, obviously, he having worked in a mission station will be sorely missed by the station and certainly my
Good afternoon. We are back in City Council. I'd like to acknowledge our city attorney for clarification of the action we took in executive session.
Thank you, Madam President. And after I recite the settlement, the council will be voting on this also. The proposed settlement is the city agrees to release Burrito King's proposal bond and performance deposit. City agrees to pay Burrito King ninety-five thousand five hundred dollars for value of the fixtures. City agrees to authorize approximately forty thousand dollars in unpaid rental amortized over amortized by Burrito King for equipment purchases. Burrito King agrees to vacate the premises by August ninth, two thousand seven. Burrito King agrees to pay the apartment for rent for June and July two thousand and seven. And Burrito King to voluntarily waive its right to bid or propose on the city contract for three years from the date of the settlement.
Thank you. Do we need to vote on that in public session? Okay, Madam Clerk, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
Twelve ayes.
Thank you. That's items been approved. Fourth with please. Next items.
Counsel has motions for posting or referral.
Those will be posted and referred.
The desk is clear.
Thank you. Do we have announcements today, colleagues? Yes, Mr. Labange?
Just returned from London in Berlin. I represented us in Berlin, our sister city, for the Vote Fest where they had a very nice program sponsored in part by our mission in Europe to encourage tourism. And it was very good to see the positive feeling towards Los Angeles.
Thank you. Any other announcements? Yes, Mr. Parks.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have two announcements. One, our Greater Los Angeles African American Chambers having their summer mixer and also membership drive on August the second, six to eight thirty P. M., Thursday at the Marriott Downtown Hotel at three thirty-three South Fig. And also, St. Andrews Park is announcing their annual jazz festival. And that's at eighty-seven oh one South St. Andrews on Saturday, August the fourth.
Thank you. Any other announcements? If not, I know we have adjourning motions. If everyone could please rise. Colleagues, I know Mr. Zine and two of the officers that passed away. I do want to add an adjourning motion for June Bratton. June Bratton is the mother of Los Angeles Police Chief William Bratton, who passed away on June twenty-ninth, two thousand, excuse me, July twenty-ninth, two thousand and seven. Mrs. Bratton was a resident of Boston. She was married to her husband, William E. Bratton, for over six decades. She will be deeply missed by all of her family and friends. I know that Chief Bratton had been frequently going back to visit her because she had been ill for the last couple of years. And we send our condolences. She is survived by her husband, William E. Bratton, son, Los Angeles Chief, William F. Bratton, and his wife, Ricky Kleinman, her daughter, Patricia Bratton, her grandsons, David P. Bratton and Kyle Bratton Ostrich. And so we do send our love and condolences to Chief Bratton and his entire family for the loss of his mother. Mr. Alakon.
Members, obviously, I'm going to defer to Mr. Zine on Detective George Selle, but I do, obviously, he, having worked in the mission station, will be sorely missed by the station. And certainly, my office, who is working very closely with that station, feels the loss as well. In addition to Detective Selle, I would like to adjourn in the memory of Lita Mahrez Porras. You probably have seen her on TV because she used to be a wrestling champion and was well-known in the wrestling industry as Lita Latin Hellcat Mahrez Porras. And she unfortunately passed away recently. She was born in Eagle Pass, Texas, on March ninth, nineteen thirty-eight. She played, she was advised to play sports by her doctors because she had way too much energy. She tried out and had a brief stint with the Los Angeles Thunderbirds of roller games. I'm sure many of you remember watching those, and some of us even in black and white. Maybe not Tony. And she, she found herself in Mildred Burke's School of Professional Wrestling in nineteen sixty-six. And there she became a force to be reckoned with. Because of her bad temper, she earned the nickname Latin Hellcat. She toured extensively in Japan, Southern California, and Arizona. Throughout her thirteen-year professional wrestling career, she held several professional wrestling titles, including California State Women's Championship, Japan's Women Championship Title Belt, and Japan's WWA, WWW, a World Tag Team Championship title with Mast Lee on September ninth, nineteen seventy-three. She will be truly missed by the wrestling industry, her fans, and friends, and family. And she is survived by her husband, Tom Mahrez, and children, Teresa Baptista, Vicky Fonseca, Debit Hilt, Patricia Gerald, Christina Salazar, and David Mahrez.
Thank you. Mr. Labange.
Thank you. I would like to ask Mr. Zine to go now, and then I'll go after him.
Mr. Zine.
The first officer, George Michael Sella, passed away July twenty-ninth, two thousand and seven. Detective Three Sella, fifty-two years of age, Simi Valley, been a member of the Los Angeles Police Department for twenty-nine years. Appointed in May nineteen seventy-eight, most routinely assigned to Mission Area Narcotics Enforcement Detail as Supervising Detective. Been working narcotics since nineteen ninety. Recognized as a supervisor for the quality and also the quarter while working Mission Area. Los Angeles Police Department and City are deeply saddened by a great loss. Would be greatly missed by his family and friends. Survived by a wife and two children, one son and one daughter. Personal comment, he worked for me. At Valley Traffic Division. He was the kind of officer that you could always depend on, quiet, mature, professional. And always had a big smile, a big heart. I remember him before he got married. Was looking forward to having a family. And Doug Gallagher, who was another motor officer at Valley Traffic Division, recruited Officer Sella, Detective Sella, to the Police Department. And they were friends the entire time. The families gathered together for many, many occasions. And it was interesting. He was a narcotics detective, a supervising detective, a Detective Three, the highest-grade detective on the Police Department. He had a passion for work. And he worked movie jobs. And on that dreadful Sunday, he was heading down the one-to-one freeway on a motorcycle, looking like a police motorcycle in uniform, to work a movie job downtown. He was heading for an off-duty job to work on a movie set. And we know what happened. As the news reports, he collided, and a number of vehicles collided after that. I never thought that he would ever have a heart attack or endure stress because he always had a real positive, mild manner attitude. Never got complaints, always kind to people. And there was an article about a mother whose son was arrested for narcotics. Detective Sella came to the station to talk to the mother. He had that kind of compassion for people. And he was just one incredible member of the LAPD. He could have retired. Twenty-nine years of service, he was eligible for retirement. He was on the drop program, but he wanted to continue because he really loved being a policeman. And he loved working the valley. He worked the valley for many, many years. Like a member as a young motor officer, never having a complaint, never having a problem. May he rest in peace. If we could have the full counsel. And his memory, and the second officer, and I had been by this scene Sunday, Officer David Rodriguez, a young officer at North Hollywood Division, thirty-three years of age, resident of North Hollywood, appointed to the Police Department in two thousand and three of May, assigned to Van Nuys Patrol. After completing probation, he transferred to Hollywood, established himself as a hard-working, proactive patrol officer, received many commendations for his hard work and arrest, played a significant role in the arrest of Valley Pizza Bandit in October two thousand and six. Police Department and City are deeply saddened by his loss. And this was tragic. He was out with some friends, and he went to an officer's home. He was a single officer. And after visiting some establishments, woke up and was going to go home where he lived with his mom out in Palmdale. And this tragedy occurred when he rolled off the one-to-one freeway and subsequently expired. He was getting ready to go to the gang detail Monday. He was going to be a gang officer at North Hollywood. A tragic loss of a young officer with a very bright career ahead of him. May David Rodriguez rest in peace. And if we can also have full counsel adjourn in his memory. And the funeral arrangements are still pending for both Officer Rodriguez, Detective Sella.
Mr. Labange, did you want to comment?
Yeah, thank you very much, Mr. Zine, for those very good tributes. And every day's a blessing. It's such an odd occurrence for anyone to have a fatal accident, and then two of our own Los Angeles police officers. Very sad day. On a sad note, but not as tragic...
Then, Mr. Labange, just before you, just to add to on the officers, I know that the Police Department is hurting. I went by and saw some of the, his colleagues at North Hollywood. And I know for all of them, it's very personal. This was their, their friend and supporter. So we send out our blessing and prayers, not only to the family of Mr. Hernandez. His, you know, he lived with his mom in Palmdale. He bought a new house so she could live there. And I know she is devastated by that, and all of the officers who worked with him and were going to work him in the gang detail. So just want to add my condolences as well. Thank you, Mr. Labange.
Thank you. Not on a tragic note, but on a sad note as well. Leslow Kovacs, who was a great Hungarian-born cinematographer, worked for then-director Dennis Hopper on the classic Easy Rider and many other films, such as Shampoo and others. He died. And he should be remembered to his wife of twenty-three years, Audrey, and their two daughters as well. I also ask that we adjourn in memory of Tom Snyder, the classic Los Angeles in the sixties, for some of us who really remember old television. But then later on, in the seventies, at Channel Four, and then nationally at NBC, Tom Snyder, the great newsman that he was. No one talked better than Tom. As he did his job, he survived by his daughter, Anna Marie Snyder. And finally, I ask that we adjourn in memory of the great Bill Walsh, one of the greatest football coaches in the history of the game. Born in Los Angeles, went to Washington High School before his family relocated to the Bay Area. And he was a great coach in many, many years. I believe there's twenty-one coaches in the Pro Football Hall of Fame, and only one has the title of genius. We all know the great work and the teaching that he did in making inspiring men who play the game of football and play it well. Their championships and the accolades keep coming in. On a personal note, I knew Coach Walsh when I was a high school football coach and attended a seminar in Anaheim. And he spent time with me to talk about the offense that John Marshall High was running. And it was later on years, I just last year saw him in Hollywood, had Jim Gray's Star Ceremony, and visited with him. And I was to go up to the Bay Area this weekend to present him on behalf of the Coliseum Commission a commendation. We mailed it up last week because of his illness was rapidly catching him. But Bill Walsh is a beautiful man who was a great inspiration. And to hear what he said about, players say about how a coach, what a teacher he was, it's truly a credit to who he was. I would like to ask, we all adjourn in his memory, his wife, Jerry, his son Craig, and daughter, Elizabeth. Bill Walsh, the great football coach, Hall of Famer for the San Francisco Forty-Niners.
Thank you. Mr. Parks.
Thank you, Madam President. I have three adjourning motions. I'd ask that we adjourn in memory of retired Chief of Police Robert Korlak, who passed away on Friday, July twenty-seventh, at his home in Pen Grove. He was the eleventh Chief of Police to serve for the city of San Rafael. He started his large sports career as a reserve officer. He was a officer with Nevada Police Department in sixty-nine, became a sergeant at Tiburon, later moved to San Rafael as a lieutenant, and was promoted to captain, then later Chief of Police. His service will be held on Friday, August third, eleven A. M., in Petaluma. Also, we had a tragic accident of an MTA employee just on Thursday, July twenty-sixth. He was driving a bus and was struck by a speeding vehicle who ran a red light. And it catapulted Mr. Bailey, Gregory Bailey, out of the bus, and the bus actually ran over him. He was only thirty-five years of age, been an employee with the MTA, started as a part-timer nineteen ninety-seven, promoted to full-time in February of nineteen ninety-nine. And the funeral services are pending. And then finally, ask that we adjourn in memory of my great aunt, Marjorie Leday, who was born nineteen seventeen to Fred and to Frank and Emma Matwayer, born in Bunkie, Louisiana, a resident of Beaumont, Texas, most of her life, where she was a coordinator for the best year senior center. She left a host of relatives. Her services were June twenty-eighth at Saint Jude Thaddeus Catholic Church, and later intermed with at the Live Oak Cemetery.
Ms. Perry.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I'd also like to second Mr. Parks's motion for Mr. Bailey. And I think some of the Matwayers are residents in my district or yours. So I'd like to add my name to that. If that would be all right. I'd like to adjourn in memory of Georgia B. Hunt. Georgia Hunt was a longtime resident of South Los Angeles. And I remember meeting her before I was elected because of her activities in teen post in the Pueblo del Rio area. She was always active in her community, worked for the Boys and Girls Scouts, Teen Post, Campfire Girls, and she was a youth director at her church. She always found ways to take young people on trips out of the community, out of the city, out of the state, and sometimes out of the country. She said that there was always the potential to broaden their vision, give them new experiences, make the world a bigger place for them. Sometimes it was difficult for her to take kids out of the community without having proper resources, such as money and transportation. But she was known as a determined woman, and she never gave up. She would often use public transportation to take kids out of the community and on new adventures throughout the city. In addition to her trips, she helped arrange job training for young people, helped them find work, and most of all, encouraged them to succeed. She mentored many generations of young people in this city and allowed them to see past the invisible walls of their community. She was a wonderful mentor and a friend and a woman who touched the lives of many children and their families. And she will be greatly missed. Her service will be Saturday, August the eleventh, the Auditorium of Kedron Community Mental Health Center at four-two-one-one South Avalon Boulevard.
Thank you. Mr. Smith.
Thank you, Madam President. It was a tough week for the Los Angeles Police Department. We also lost a reserve police officer last week. Ask the council to adjourn in the name of Reserve Police Officer Harry Lloyd Nelson, serial R-two-three-nine-one, who passed away on Wednesday, July twenty-fifth, in Glendale, California. Reserve Officer Nelson was born on June tenth, nineteen twenty-seven, in Minneapolis, Minnesota. He's appointed at the Los Angeles Police Department on May seventeenth, nineteen ninety-three. He was last assigned to the Northeast Detectives, where he served with great pride. Officer Nelson will be greatly missed by his friends and family, and including those in the Los Angeles Police Department. He's survived by his daughter, Melody, son Gage, and two grandchildren.
All members, thank you. Any other adjourning motions? If not, Madam Clerk or Master Clerk, please call the roll. Meeting's adjourned. Thank you.